I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education for Tuesday, August 11th, rescheduled from August 4th. Thank you, everybody, for joining us, and we'll begin with the roll call. Ms. Aronson?
Present.
Dr. Chang?
Present.
Ms. Bolan?
Present.
Dr. Steinberg?
Here.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson?
Here.
Ms. Wilcox?
Here.
Mr. Zidaneowicz?
Here.
Thank you. Mark, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do not have a revision to the agenda order. We do not have student participation this evening. We will now move to public communications. These are comments on topics of interest to the public. We, as board members, do not respond to members of the public during public communication. We will receive your message, but we do not respond to that message. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and Lori will be holding up. I'm not sure if you can see her, but she'll hold up a yellow card when you have a minute left and a red card when your time is up. And I will also queue you to that so that you know your time is running short. Because we don't have a sign-up sheet for a virtual meeting, I'm going to call off the last two digits of phone numbers in the order in which they came on. So as I call out the last two digits of your phone number, please let me know if you would like to make a public comment or if you're just here to listen. The first is a phone number ending in six zero. So if you would like to make a public comment, you can go ahead and start with your name and address.
No, thank you. Just listening.
All right. Thank you. Next is oh four. If your phone number ends in oh four, are you interested in making a public comment? We'll move to oh two. Oh two. All right. A phone number ending in nine zero. Are you interested in making public comment?
Yes, please.
All right. You may go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brooke Daly, and I reside at 65 Wardwell Road.
Great. Thank you. You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have two students, one that is at Duffy going to middle school and Wolk at Elementary. I'm also on the EDI Committee at Duffy Elementary. I'm calling in tonight to speak about our students with special needs. I have two children, one named Finn with the dual diagnosis of Down syndrome and autism. Finn has not done well with the COVID lockdown and distance learning has not worked for him, unfortunately. I find a one-size-fits-all approach with all students does not work for our children and does not understand how to use a computer and has no interest in interacting with others on video calls. Before March, Finn was doing very well at Wolk at Elementary and looked forward to seeing his teachers and friends every day. He received several therapies at school, including speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, a behavioralist and a one-on-one para. He has not been able to participate in any of these things since March and has not really good substance too. And simply put, going outside the system is too expensive for our family, and I'm sure it's the same for other many families. My son interacts best with the world through sight, sound, and touch. So although I'm very worried about sending him back in person, I feel I have no choice because he needs these critical services. I fear for him and his peers regressing with being at school for this length of time. My other big concern is what this will do to our district as far as diversity and inclusion if the majority of the students with special needs decide to stay home. The typical kids and the special needs kids really benefit and learn from each other. So I would please urge and like to ask the board to be creative in your planning should the inevitable happen and we go back into lockdown, as well as looking at a solid and robust plan for next year, including ESY, which is summer school for those who don't know. And lastly, I would just like to end by thanking the district for the two weeks of the acclamation program, which has been very successful and helpful for my son. Thank you.
Thank you. I also meant to state before we move to the next person that public comment is limited to 21 minutes per subject. So if you don't get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can either stick around till the end of the meeting when we also have public comment or you can send the board an email, which we are receiving many of. Next, we have a phone number ending in nine eight. Nine eight. Are you interested in public comment? Three three. A phone number ending in three seven. Zero nine. Okay, moving to six five. The phone number ending in six five.
Yes, hello. I would like to make a statement.
Sure.
All right, awesome. My name is Natalie Delacruz, and I live at Eight Bridge Brook Drive. I'm a Rising Junior at Connors. I would like to start by thanking everyone on this meeting for your dedication to creating a safe learning environment for students like me. But I'm deeply saddened to see that after numerous public comments made at the last meeting, an email campaign to the board, and solutions presented to get student representation in meetings such as these, there is still not. In the agenda for this meeting, there's a section for student participation, yet there was not. Students are only being given the opportunity to do what I'm doing, which is giving a public comment that cannot even be responded to. Most students don't even know that this is an option for them, so I will likely be the only student giving a comment. However, Dr. Haskins is doing a very admirable thing by reaching out to students directly to hear what matters to us and hear how admins and executives can do better. I would like to publicly thank her for her hard work and dedication to including all voices. I urge the board to do the same by having student participation like the agenda says. My peers and I do not feel safe going back to school, and we want to have our concerns addressed on all levels. I recognize how difficult and unique our situation is, and I truly believe that having multiple perspectives at the decision-making table makes finding equitable solutions much easier. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, a phone number ending in nine nine. Ending in one two.
Hi.
Hi. Go ahead.
Ending in nine nine.
Oh, nine nine.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't figure out how to unmute myself. Hi, Jonathan Fish, 65 Warwick Street. I'm going to keep it brief so that other people can comment. Now, I understand the limitations around in-person staffing issues that have been noted by Tom Moore in some of the recent communications with West Hartford parents. However, the solution cannot be to treat kindergarteners the same as high school seniors. They have different capabilities around schooling from home and would require different levels of involvement from their parents. We can all agree that our elementary school children need the in-person instruction and socialization the most. We also know that younger kids have so far shown that they are less susceptible to both infection and transmission of COVID-19. Two of the principles stated by the American Academy of Pediatrics in their reentry guidance state that policies should be practical, feasible, and appropriate for child and adolescent developmental stage, and that special considerations and accommodations to account for the diversity of youth should be made, especially for our vulnerable populations, including those who are medically fragile, live in poverty, have developmental challenges, or have special healthcare needs or disabilities, with the goal of safe return to school. Mr. Moore's proposed plan fails to meet these principles. My view, and there could be many other solutions to this, is to be creative. And here's what I see. You would take 100% of the high school students and move them online. High school students are more capable of doing this. You would then take sixth through eighth grade and put them into high school on an AB schedule if that's necessary, a hybrid schedule. Next, move four and five to the middle school and keep K through three in the elementary school, full-time. If necessary, we can shift teachers around. Now, I know that there's issues with credentialing, but, you know, I think now is the time again to be creative. I know that this idea only addresses the first principle, and additional plans must be made, and I think somebody else had already spoken to this, around special considerations and accommodations for other populations. I implore the board to reject Mr. Moore's proposal and look to others, such as the one my plan described earlier, that take into account the needs of children of different developmental stages. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, a phone number ending in one two. Phone number ending in seven six.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Yeah, I would like to comment. This is Shannon Marione. We're at 65 Grenden Road. And I'm speaking with kind of two hats. We're parents of two children in Rising first grade and fourth grade at Charter Oak Elementary School. And I also work for my job as an executive director of an organization called Ready CT, which works to address academic achievement and opportunity gaps for students across the state of Connecticut. And I just want to briefly mention that there was a resource put forward to the state of Connecticut a couple of weeks ago that we worked on with a number of advocates across the state, as well as the Superintendents Association, the State Department of Education, Boards of Education Association, and both the teachers' unions in the state. And it was in partnership with the Columbia University Center for Public Research and Leadership. And it was a set of resources around distance learning. And I just wanted to make sure that it was on the radar for the West Hartford Public School System and the Board of Ed as something that has been supported by all the aforementioned organizations. And one of the things that I think it does is it provides a framework for high-quality distance learning in the event that we do have to move back to a distance learning model again at any point during the year. It's also good practice for those students that are going to be experiencing distance learning in the hybrid scenario. And one of the things that it also does in addition to a framework is provide a model distance learning plan that districts can look to and kind of not have to necessarily reinvent the wheel, just look at some best practices that were pulled from across the country through some significant research by the Columbia Group. And the fact that it received an endorsement from all the aforementioned organizations, I think it's something that has a lot of potential to kind of move forward with this work. And so I just hope that the Board of Ed has seen these resources. If not, I'm happy to share them. There was a webinar with state superintendents two weeks ago that I participated in, and I did not recognize any West Hartford public school names on the list of 139 people who attended, but I hope that it is on the radar for West Hartford. And then I just want to second the comments made by Mr. Fish around the developmental nature of how we consider a hybrid model. We also, as an organization, informed the reopen task force for schools. And the recommendation that did get put forward to the state was to prioritize elementary school students having in-person instruction with a model that was put forward. And then ultimately, the governor did decide to stress in-person for all students initially and then shifted to the hybrid option with very little direction. But there is a recommendation that has been made available to the state commissioner of education and the governor that does prioritize elementary school students being in place in person with high school students being prioritized for distance learning, which again could be done in a very high-quality way. So just, I'm available, I'm just offering again as a resource, just a lot of these things have been happening at the state level, and I hope that they're kind of making inroads with the West Hartford conversation.
Thank you. Just under the wire. All right. Next is a phone number ending in five six.
Yes. That struck me. I would like to comment.
Go for it.
My name is Ashley Burke, and I live at 51 Glenn Brook Road. I have two children in the Webb Hill Elementary School, and it seems very evident that the hybrid plan is at the forefront in what we're kind of going forward with, even though it hasn't been solidified by the board. I would just please like the board to consider the half-day schedule. I think it's imperative that children are in school and students receive full-day instruction on those days. Having two elementary school children, and again, reiterating what Mr. Fish said, that it's really important for their social and emotional needs that elementary school children are in person as much as possible. It also limits the amount of childcare that's necessary. So I'd just like them to please think about those needs, as well as the special education students that require those in-person instructions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, a phone number ending in eight six. Eight six. All right. Next is two nine. And after that, we have eight zero, the phone number ending in eight zero. Four zero. One zero. Next, a phone number ending in five one. Four eight. Six six. Seven eight. And the last one that I have, and I may have missed a few if people came on during other people's comments, is eight one.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Would you? Yes, would you like to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Oh. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? We have room for two more members of the public to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, this is Rob Alarcon. I'd like to speak.
Okay, go for it.
Sure. My name is Rob Alarcon. I live at nine Cadwell Street, and I have two children at Duffy Elementary. I really, really appreciate the hybrid plan. I think it's about the best that we can do under the circumstances. My concern is a couple of holes in the plan, as I saw it, that we're probably going to have to deal with down the line. One is high school students continuing to play sports is a huge gap in what we're trying to accomplish here. I don't know if that's been resolved, or leaving that to the sports league could be a problem. The other is the before and after care seems to be a kind of a hole in the plan at the moment. Thinking about what they're going to be doing, I would be very interested to know what their plan is going to be because it seems in some way that that's going to blow up the cohort system. Finally, the thing to consider is that's all of the resources that we have in West Hartford, all of the money, all of the opportunity, all of the screens. We're not in this alone. We're in this together with other districts that have more or less. I presume very few districts have more resources, but we neighbor districts that have way less and more resources. And I think we're going to see that the holes in the plan, the things that are going to close Connecticut down overall are going to be other districts that don't have the same opportunity that we have, high school, high school sports, and before and after care. And I think we're almost certainly going to see that Connecticut is going to be closed down at some point. So I think we need to plan, not just for the best-case scenario, that this goes on for very long, but we almost certainly will be in a full-from-home position pretty soon. And I'd like to see a strong acknowledgement of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have room for one more member of the public, if there's one more person who would like to speak.
This is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Ed Gardner Block from 65 Leonard Road, Bugby Elementary School. I have one child there. I just, great comments by everybody. I have a couple of my own. One is that, "Please, the board to please consider ways of switching the plan during the year, so not having to make a decision for the entire year in terms of in-school learning or at home." So reentry points or points where you can exit. And another consideration that I would like to come on is is that it would be, I think, beneficial at this point to
I'm just going to and ask anybody who's not speaking, put yourself on mute.
Yeah. My only other comment is to try to focus away from standardized testing as much as we can this year. In fact, it would be better.
Hello, are you still there?
I'm there now. I got muted somehow, but my last comment, hopefully short, is that to de-emphasize standardized testing and focus more on getting each child to have a good outcome out of the year, these are tough times. And I think the standardized testing is the first thing I'd like to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just state your name one more time for the record? I missed it.
I'm sorry. Ed Gardner Block, B-L-O-C-K, first name Edgar with a D-O at the end.
Captain.
65 Leonard Road. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We are now moving on from public communications. And again, I'll ask anybody to mute who's not speaking right now. Thank you.
Yeah, can you mute everyone with your?
No, I can't, actually. I think Tom can, though. Okay, we're going to move to unfinished business. We don't have any unfinished business. Moving on to new business. We don't have new business. Staff communications and reports, and starting with the superintendent's report, the discussion of the back-to-school model.
Hey, everybody. Thanks. Obviously, this has been the most busy summer of any of our lives. And really, I know what the principals say, and we laid out what's in front of us as we have 27 days until the start of school. It's certainly going to be the busiest August and early September of our lives also. And I want to thank everybody for their positive thoughts. And this has been an immensely difficult time to lead. And that's truly just, that's just a statement of fact. To go through when, no matter what the plan is, the fact is, some people aren't going to like it. No matter what the advice is, I have people sending me articles from reputable sources, and two articles days apart will say opposite things. Two doctors will say opposite things. So I want, I just hope people understand that we're operating with the advice of CDC, the Connecticut Department of Public Health, taking feedback from our own health committees as we develop protocols for when we get back into school, and really working hard to do one major goal, and that is to get kids back into school. And even that in and of itself. Every day over the past few days, we've actually seen a pretty large increase in the number of children opting out into virtual school. And I get it. I have no, I say that without any judgment towards people because there is a pretty powerful personal decision to be made by everybody in what we believe the risk is, what we believe we can do to mitigate the risk, and how we make decisions for our families. And, you know, the one thing that I would say is that schools, schooling has been my life. It's my chosen profession. The easiest thing for me to do, the money-saving thing for the board to do, would be to choose to go all virtual right now and do that for the year. That's not what any of us wants us to do. So we had to come up with a plan that we could get in place at the beginning of September that does the most to get the most kids back into school. And I think there's a reason that you've seen basically every district in the area and any district that's of comparative size to us being in a hybrid plan similar to ours. And I want to think about one thing that the time sensitivity of this. one thing's that the time sensitivity of this. I'm typically at this time of year frantic about one building project, looking at and thinking we're not gonna be done by the time the kids come back. When I look at what's happening across sixteen schools, that's a whole different level of, okay, stay calm because we're gonna get there. But there's a lot of things we need to think about. So before I get into that though, I wanna talk about specific metrics because there's been questions. The biggest thing people will talk about that believe everybody should be back on the first day of school is that the metric that the state sent out, a key metric, um, that decides that you should take into account when deciding what level of schooling you're gonna put forth is, um, the seven-day rolling averages of cases per one hundred thousand. And Connecticut is in a very good position there right now with two point one. And it's also being looked at by county. All right? Um, it's important that we look at our neighboring states and to see where they are. Massachusetts, most districts are in hybrid. They're at five point four per one hundred thousand. New York is at three point four with a mix throughout the state. Rhode Island's at eight point five per one hundred thousand. They're floating the idea of delaying the start of school, um, right now. That was just floated this afternoon. We're keeping contact with superintendents from across the country so that we can get some of those ideas that are creative. Um, one of the things that makes people leery is pictures. For instance, when we see a Georgia high school that's crowded in the hallway with students not wearing masks and then we see immediately hundreds of people in quarantine and the school being forced to shut down right away. To put in perspective, Georgia's caseload is twenty-two per one hundred thousand. So that's a different position. If we were in that case, I wouldn't be advocating for opening school in the same way. I'd certainly be advocating, as we are, for masks for everybody. Um, but there's, that's what goes into that component. And tied into that is inexorably what comes next. Because the biggest thing that people will ask about is why don't you test everybody? Um, and I wish we could. I wish we had a low-cost test. Nothing infuriates me more as an advocate for public education in knowing that high-priced private schools can require or pay for a COVID- nineteen test. And people can say, well, it's a good idea. Yeah, teachers should go, students should go. I'd love to say, yes, there's absolutely plenty of testing available. To put in perspective, today Connecticut had eighty-three hundred and thirty-eight tests reported. If we sent all of our students and our faculty that work here to get tests, we need ten thousand tests. So West Hartford would be a report, would be requiring more tests than the entirety of the state reported today. Then make Hartford do it, Farmington do it, Sinbury do it, New Britton do it, all of those districts. So the, one of the biggest tools that we would have has been taken from our arsenal and our mitigation strategies. That's an important thing to remember when we talk about what's the safest way to open. All right, so if we were just talking about caseload and that, full speed ahead would be the way to go. But I wanna talk about the second page of the state metrics. And here are the things we have to consider when go, when deciding whether to put everybody in or to start off the year in hybrid. Other key metrics are classroom space for distancing. Do you have classroom space everywhere to distance six feet? Outdoor space. Do you have adequate outdoor space to hold classes outside? Overall population of the school. Is your school large? Ability to keep groups small. Can you keep your group small and move together only in that small group at all levels? And then there's questions about HVAC. Is your HVAC system new? What can it handle? And Andy's gonna talk more about HVAC, so I'm not gonna go into any single piece of this. But when I take everything together and every metric together, and I'm not alone, basically, superintendents across the state are dealing with these same questions. Knowing that my goal and our goal is to get everybody into school, the best way we can get everybody into school to start the year is to go on a hybrid plan. That's what I believe one hundred percent is the safest. But I also want people to realize there's so much more that goes into it that we have to find out about, that we can talk about in theory right now. But I wanna talk about some of the things that we need to build confidence in with everybody. We talked about HVAC. We'll talk about that. One thing is certainly true. If you cut the population in a building in half, you're cutting the load in the HVAC systems and we're knowing how they operate. Andy, again, we'll talk more about that. Buses. If you cut the number of kids that are in busing at the beginning, we get a good picture of how many kids are coming on the buses and they're able to spread themselves out. Cafeteria. How we feed students. We talked about restaurants being at fifty percent capacity, restaurants being outside. At each of our high schools, we have fourteen hundred kids, okay, that we have to feed every day in a typical plan, which is one of the reasons that our hybrid plan is unique and that it does move past some of the cafeteria and, um, food questions. And there's some questions for teachers that it's fair for a teacher to wonder about. So because the simple solution everybody wants is kids will leave in the classroom and that's one of the places we are. That does mean kids are removing their masks in the classroom while they eat. And we believe in the metrics we can put forward, but there's distancing questions and there's a teacher that'll be in the room with them while they eat. Sorry, I'm late. Um, playgrounds and protocols for playgrounds. These are just little things, but incredibly important to go through. What does a recess period look like? What does a playground look like? How do we keep kids in cohorts there? Our illness protocols. The state released some. Um, our health advisory committee had already been working on them. We have them going to graphics so that our parents can look at this, understand what the protocols will be, um, when somebody does get sick, as well as we're printing up other things that remind people that they do all of the checks on their child every day and that our staff members do this every day, checking for fever, checking for headache, checking for stomach and keeping people whole. We understand our absence rate this year for staff and for students is gonna be the highest it's ever been. Traffic patterns. You've all been through drop-off as a parent. If people aren't putting their kids on the bus, that's more people driving. Um, we know what that looks like. We know how difficult that is at the start of a school year to get everybody set. Lineups in and out of the building before and after school, getting all that in place. Um, the isolation room that's required in each building. Um, so if a kid, child does show symptoms, they're not sitting in the nurse's office if people come. They're in another room. We have to staff that room. We have to staff that room with somebody that's willing to be in a room with somebody who is showing signs of COVID- nineteen. We don't have to hire one of those people. We have to hire seventeen of those people for our school sites. That's a completely new position we've never had before. Um, the, um, custodial protocols, substitutes. We just said absences are gonna be the highest they've ever been. Substitutes that aren't traveling building to building that we're trying to keep in position. Um, at-home learning organization. The largest elementary school in the district is going to be our at-home learning elementary school. And that's with twenty-six sections right now, probably twenty-seven. The numbers just jumped up. So, um, that's an incredible amount of organization to go through with scheduling. Hiring. All those people that we talked about, um, all those new positions and people that may not choose to come back, we have to hire their replacements. Again, we have twenty-seven days. I'm not discussing sports and music because more recommendations are coming from the state. I don't disagree with the caller about the importance of this topic. Um, I, and it's something that I trust the people working on the committees. I know a lot of people on the committees. They're good people. They're getting presentations from doctors and otherwise, but recommendations will have to be made about that. This is not unique to superintendents. University presidents are doing the same thing. Superintendents across the state are doing the same to, same things across the country. We're trying to make the best decisions with all of that. Um, the hybrid allows us to open and allows for children to come back and get daily instruction. The schedule we've designed in the hybrid, I know people want, well, there's natural questions that come with it. It's the only one I've seen that allows real small group instruction with their teacher every day for every child. Almost every hybrid model in the state has one day off. We're talking about two days in school a week versus five days in school a week. And the goal is, as I sent this out, is that we do get our elementary school students back as soon as possible, that our metrics stay where they are, that all of these things that go along with opening the schools go smoothly. The benefit, another benefit is we have other districts opening before us. And so we'll get to see some of the things that are challenges there. We'll learn from them. And that in early October, after four weeks of hybrid, the hope is all students can come back. And we wanna stagger that at the elementary level. We still have a lot of questions. We're gonna get a lot of reports from things like our HVAC systems, what they can handle and what does it look like when fifteen hundred high school kids are together in the same place? Um, what does class movement look like? All of those things. I am a big believer that we can do it. I'm a big believer that we will do it. I mean, there's nobody, you won't find anybody that wants all the kids back in school as much as I do. This is the plan that will get our kids back as soon as possible. So what I'd like to do now is turn over and give, allow, um, members of my team to give some more information, not just about the basics of the plan, schedule, things like that, but also what we're doing now to get ready since we have this, um, clock ticking kind of like the show Twenty-four that's always sitting in our heads about the opening of, um, school now. So with that, I turn it over to Andy Morrow first and then, um, Mr. Visina. So Andy, go ahead.
Before we do that, um, is it your preference that we ask questions, save all of our questions to the end or ask questions as each person presents?
I think it's better to go till the end because I think a lot of the questions may get answered through the presentations.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So as as Tom said, uh, you know, we've been a little busy, uh, between all of this and then talking also about having buildings depowered and all of the the fun that we had. Bob Palmer and I were joking earlier today that if we see the locus coming, we're both out. So fair warning. Um, but as Tom had mentioned, we've gone ahead and, uh, as we talked about before, hired a professional, uh, energy engineering firm that's, uh, already been working with us and examining not only our use data, but also is, uh, working with our vendors for our building control systems and is in our schools, uh, to assess our systems, to develop, uh, to develop, uh, schedules for us, to assess the rates, to make sure that we're operating with the greatest efficiency we can, to make sure that we're operating, uh, with as much fresh air as we can without overheating systems, without overfreezing systems. Um, as you can imagine, this is, there's only about five groups that can do this in the state. And this is now the state requirement that everyone be doing this. And so they're they're a little busy. Uh, and so they're working on, with us and we're primarily working second shift with them. So they're in our schools over the evenings assessing. We're working with them on the weekends. And, uh, we're, uh, working with them. And so as soon as we do have that assessment and have those ideas and those suggestions, we will go ahead and, uh, and implement those. And, you know, we're working, Bob and I are meeting regularly and in communication regularly with Teresa McKeon at the WHA and she's involved in this as well because again, we all want people back. We all want, uh, the greatest, uh, the greatest efficiency we can as far as making sure that students and staff are healthy in all of our buildings. And so we'll hopefully have more to talk about with that in the next couple of weeks and I'll share that information and Tom will share it as well. But certainly going, uh, into the hybrid to start, uh, helps us a little bit with with some of that air quality. And I I think it does help us with that. We're going through and continuing our, uh, approach to building spacing. We're working with the principals. We've identified the various entry plans and exit plans. We've identified all of the, um, signage that we'll need. The outdoor furniture, uh, is arriving for the schools and will be put in place at the various elementary schools and at the very secondary schools. Um, as far as the health and safety, we have developed and finalized our health protocols. And these are, uh, these are for staff and for parents, uh, to really decide with, if a child does get ill, what is the pathway back to school? How do we make sure that, uh, that we're we're confident and that the child is well and that the child is not going to be contagious for others? And so this is work that we've done very closely in the, uh, in the Health and Safety Advisory, working with our pediatricians. We've also done this in close, uh, close work with the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District as far as well as the, uh, Department of of Public Health and CDC guidelines. And these are consistent with the state guidelines that they released, uh, early or late last week. Uh, we had already had these for about two weeks that we had developed and had been finalizing. So these are currently with our graphics department who are working to put it into flow charts and different graphics that are, that are better for people to understand on our website. We're really trying to tone it down from a clinical standpoint so it becomes apparent, friendly, it's easy to understand. And then we'll also work with Rosina on the Outreach Advisory to make sure that this is something that is is, uh, on our websites and easy to be understood by all of our community. There also will be a component of this as far as the self-checklist that we're asking parents to do for each student every morning to check their health. And this will be something that will go home, hopefully, uh, in a, in a magnet form that can go on the fridge and just be that daily reminder about, uh, the questions that we need each parent to ask about their child and about the people in their household to make sure that that everyone is safe. We're also, uh, working on the various bus routes. As you may know, we sent out, uh, the survey asking for people, uh, to really evaluate their bus use and whether or not they they could decline the bus route, uh, their bus use for this year. And we did have, uh, roughly fifteen hundred parents decide that they would be comfortable driving their children. And so that will definitely help us with the spacing with the bus routes as well. We're also then working very closely with Eric Dancy, uh, and the West Hartford Police and developing and making sure that we have the right traffic patterns to handle the increased traffic that we know will happen at least for the first couple of weeks as people get used to the different times and get used to dropping off and picking up their students at the schools. So really, there's, um, a lot of ongoing work. Uh, it's just a, a lot of checklist, a lot of things we're working through. We still have a lot of work to do. But as Tom said, you know, no one is more committed, I think, to get kids back than we are. And on behalf of my, my daughter who's headed into her senior year, they really wanna be back. And so I think we're, uh, we're gonna get there. But I do believe that the, by starting out in the hybrid, it gives us that, that opportunity to get there safely. And I do think it's the right decision, uh, decision when you consider all of the different factors that we're looking at across, uh, seventeen different buildings. And so I think that's about, uh, that's about it for me.
Thanks, Andy. If we could go to, uh, Mr. Visina now, Paul, if you wanna talk about the, um, hybrid schedule itself and other plans we're working on now moving forward?
Certainly. Paul Visina, Assistant Superintendent. You all hear me okay? Great. Uh, thanks for being here and, uh, give you a, give you an update. Now, I'll try to be concise, but I'm, I'm sure you have a lot of questions. Um, first and foremost, as, as has been said, but bears repeating, you know, all of our plans are grounded in safety. Um, and we really saw the hybrid plan, number one, based on the metrics that Tom has already gone over as sort of the scenario that we're in relative to the state guidance. Um, so, you know, in terms of that, that path is kind of set for us. But we do see that hybrid plan as the pathway to bringing all students back. Um, the specifics of the plan kind of in a global, uh, just to go over some things. Um, and I do have this, uh, on our website. Um, and I know that Tom has recently sent this out in a communication to all families. But, uh, the, the school would begin for staff members, teachers and staff, uh, the week of August thirty-first. And from August thirty-first until fourth September, uh, teachers are in for a, uh, for professional development on those five days. Uh, so there is no school, uh, that Monday, uh, September the seventh, but September the eighth But September the 8th would be the first day of school. And what we're looking to do under our hybrid is we're looking, we've broken our students essentially into, into two teams, call them the red and the blue. The red team being last names generally beginning with A through K. And the blue team with last names beginning L through M. And the goal would be that we bring in, you know, that, that red group, A students with last names beginning A through K on Tuesday the 8th and Wednesday, the 9th of September for a two-day orientation. And then we bring in the corresponding group, the blue group on 10 through 11. And then from that point forward, beginning on the week of September the 14th, students would alternate one week of attendance in school at a time with the opposing group being at home, receiving some small group instruction synchronously with their teacher. And I'll, and I'll go over that a little bit more. But the week of 9/14 would be a red group for, for those students to attend in person. The week of 9/21, the blue. Again, 9/28, the red, and 10/5, blue. And at that point, after four weeks in school, our, our hope is to, is to take that hard pause to evaluate where we are as a state, where we are as a community, and see if we can have a full return to school at that time. And as Tom has already mentioned, when we are looking at that full return, I believe it was in his communication prioritizing the elementary to come back first. So these are all things that are definitely in our plan, definitely in our minds, and definitely in our hearts in terms of what we want for children as well. What's happening specifically then in terms of schedule at the elementary and I'll share my screen and I'll do my best to describe this to those listening that are unable to see it. But on our website, if you're on www.whps.org, on our opening banner, there's a return to school plans button that you can click. And when you scroll down right at the top, there is a hybrid model for reopening schools that we've put on there. And once you've selected that, you scroll down, you have the ability to look across elementary, middle, and high. And, and basically, other than some differences in times, the general plan is, as Tom has said, unique from other districts.
Sorry, Paul, can you share your screen?
Oh, I apologize. I thought I was sharing my screen. I didn't click the share button. That was the problem. Now you can see it. Okay. So the elementary plan is what I'm displaying right here. And it's unique from other districts. And you know, too, there was another caller who talked about, you know, different conversations at the state level. Just trust for the board's knowledge and for the public, you know, Tom's in on a weekly call with superintendents from across the state. Carrie Jones, my Director of Elementary Ed, Ann McKernan, my Director of Secondary Ed, and myself are on a weekly call with assistant superintendents talking about the curriculum and reopening plans with districts from across the state. Andy, I think, is on a daily call relative to health and safety. So, I mean, we're very much in the know of what's going on and we've, we've asked a lot of questions about what other folks are doing. And what a lot of folks are doing for their hybrid, it might be less time away from school because basically there's less support for the students that are at home. And our goal was to find a way that we can maximize the amount of time in school for everyone. We wanted, we, we didn't want any school closures that unnecessary for whole days off if we didn't need them. And we wanted to find a way to provide some supports to students when they're at home. And so the basic tenants of our plan are to bring everyone in, the, the group that's going to be in, whether it's the red or the blue group, and give them direct instruction in the school setting. And then follow an early dismissal schedule. And after that dismissal, have the opportunity to do small group instruction with the students that are at home. And that kind of drives some of our release times. We have our high schools releasing first in and around 12 o'clock. We have our middle schools releasing in and around 1 o'clock and our elementary is releasing around 2:00 P.M. So, so what you're looking at here, and I, and I have to stress because I get this question a lot. This is a sample schedule. This is what one student's schedule on the left at a primary grade might look like, on the right at an upper elementary grade might look like. But this is not the static schedule for all students. It's intended to demonstrate that what we would plan to do at the elementary when students are attending in school is we would intend to have a morning meeting time of sufficient length. Because during that morning meeting time, aside from the normal routines that, that we're doing, we recognize there's a huge need to support students' social, emotional learning. And we would plan at all levels to build that into something akin to a morning meeting. At the middle schools, it's the advisory. At the high schools, we call it community. And I can talk about it a little bit if you like. They vary in frequencies, but in elementary and middle, those opportunities are daily. We also at the elementary have some of that built directly into our civics curriculum. This is also the opportunity where we are blending in our work, you know, we have not forgotten nor has it taken a backseat, our work on anti-racism and continuing that, that focus of cultural competence that we've been working on for a significant number of years here in the district. So those are, those are the opportunities. We'd still have a big literacy block and a daily mathematics block. Those, those are pieces that we're very important in our schedule. You see and hear kind of safety and technology. We do recognize, you know, especially at the beginning of the year. And, and we've talked about, we're going to need to teach students, especially at the elementary, well, at all levels really, some new routines. Whether that's, you know, whether that's as simple as hand washing or figuring out the correct direction of travel in a building in terms of one-way hallways or stairwells or any of those safety pieces that Andy was describing. And also the technology pieces, as, as one of the callers mentioned. We certainly recognize there's a very genuine possibility that at some point numbers in Connecticut, while we've been doing great, knock on wood, could spike. And we could see the need for a large-scale shutdown, whether that was localized here in West Hartford or whether that was across the state. So right from the front end, we want to make sure that we're providing some basics of instruction on technology that students, we might have, certainly would have gotten to throughout the year. But we want to make sure it's front-loaded so that we could be ready in case that happens, you know, sooner than we expected. Important to note in this schedule that we are maintaining our specials. And one of the things that we're trying to do with specials with visual arts, music, PE, health, library, media, and certainly our world language program in grades three through five. We, we recognize that those are, those are teachers that touch every child. And so in the interests of cohorts, and this is some feedback that, that comes from definitely from work with our teacher group and our leaders. How do we, how could we provide some level of cohorting for our specials teachers and those classes? For the benefit, not just to the teachers, but the students as well. And so the way that we're doing that is we're kind of adopting at the elementary school a model similar to what we have at the middle school where those specials will follow in rotation. So we're looking at two-week rotations. So if I'm in school for a week, I'll get, say, a week during that specials block, I might get a week of visual arts each day during that block for a week. And then when I'm at home, that visual arts teacher, as well as another specialist teacher, will be checking in with me. And, and during that second week, when the, when the, if I was in the A group, when the B group comes in or the blue group comes in, they would get art for that week as well. After that, when I come back to school, I would be in a, a different special for a week. And they would just continue to rotate. And in that way, over the course of several months, we're really able to keep the contact for, more contained and have more of a, you know, fewer cohorts in terms of contact. There is recess every day, you know, that is the concern with the social and physical distancing that students do definitely need the opportunity to get up and move about. We know that's very important at the elementary level. And that will be retained and our principals are doing, you know, yeoman's work to look at outdoor spaces and look at how they're going to be able to manage and mitigate that. And then during the other periods, we'll certainly have our science and our writing and all the rest. After, after dismissal, the teachers will have a fairly quick turnaround. And then they would be having program times for small group check-in. So if you, if you anticipate, say, a class no larger in general than 24 certainly, with 12 students and likely to be less than that, with 12 students to be attending school and, and 12 at home, those, those 10 to 12 at home would be broken into two groups at the elementary so that you could have a manageable group to have really more high-quality direct instruction online at the end of that day. So I would be meeting with five of those, five or six of those, 10 to 12, say, from 2:30 to 3:30, and then the remaining from 3:00 to 3:30. What's happening when I, as a classroom teacher, am not meeting with those students, that would be the other group would get picked up by one of the specials teachers. So that the students would have two contact periods for instruction, one with a specialist teacher and one with their classroom. And they're, but, but in addition to that, those students would have independent reading assignments that they should be working on during the day. They would have probably, say, 30 minutes at least of math instruction and practice that would be assigned to them on an individualized basis through DreamBox. They would have a writing assignment and/or for some of the older grades, potentially writing and/or research attached to that. They'd certainly have activities that their specialist teachers are going to talk to them about when they're at home that they could be working on relative to art or physical education or music or keyboarding. And then they might also have other explorations in science. So there'd be a good anywhere from two, two and a half hours of time that students would be working at home. And then they'd have that direct instructional period, which with the classroom teacher would likely focus most heavily on, on helping them with the literacy and their mathematics instruction to keep them moving. At the middle school and high school levels, they're pretty parallel. I'll just show you one of them. There, as you know, we've moved to a block for instruction. And we would maintain a block whether we were in the hybrid or even in our full return to school. And the only real difference would be that we shift out this early release from 1:00 or 1:30 to the full school day, which would increase the size of the instructional blocks to closer to 75 to 90 minutes. But essentially, we'd be looking at eight different class offerings that students are used to in the middle school and in the high schools, split over two days with four instructional blocks per day. Plus, as I said, at the middle school, we would build in a healthy advisory period. Under the hybrid, it's in the neighborhood of 20 minutes. And it would be more close to 30 minutes under a full day schedule once we come out of the hybrid. Students would maintain two unified arts, one per day. They would have a learning lab. They, you know, they would have essentially the same things that they have now spread over two days. And then after release, the, there would be the opportunity for each teacher to be able to check in with the corresponding group, whether it was red or blue, that was at home for about 20 to 25 minutes. And again, the goal there and the real difference, and this was the feedback that we got from the students. We had a lot of student input to our plan as to what worked online and what didn't, dramatic amounts of it. I recognize that students want to be part of a decision process about actually coming back, which is something that the state dictates, not, 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 not something for them. But their feedback has been strongly reflected in terms of how we're doing this plan, providing for direct instruction during these periods as opposed to, you won't hear me use words like check-in or things of this nature. So that's really the bulk of what the plan itself is. And just very quickly, what we've been working on during this time. Certainly a lot of scheduling because scheduling and figuring out how we were going to get those specials to rotate at the elementary has been something significant. Alongside scheduling is the ongoing work that we're doing with staffing. We're trying to start to coordinate efforts of, you know, my office with Rick's office and, and others to be able to put names to things. We're in the process of building a remote handbook because I would be remiss not to mention our remote learning plan, which will service approximately 10 to 15% of our population who's made the decision that it's, you know, their conditions at home, whatever they are, it's not safe for them to come back. Perhaps they have a family member or a child that's in a high-risk group. And we certainly respect that. And we certainly want to do everything to make sure they're safe, but also to make sure that they're educated. So we're looking, we, we recognize that we want to be able to provide them with a lot more information about what remote schooling will look like. So we're going, we have that, a good draft of that that we're looking to send out in the next few days here. We've been doing a fair amount of curriculum work and I won't step on Gretchen or Rosina's toes except to say that, that there've been a number of folks involved to build what that social, emotional learning and anti-racism curriculum will look like. We're also putting together a compendium for teachers in terms of their planning at the elementary level so that they have more direct guidance as to the kinds of things. We, we're not going to be able to give them that same, you know, this is the lesson plan for everyone that we did for when we were totally online learning where it was, we didn't have really the benefit of direct instruction for teachers in the, at the beginning of this in the spring last year. So, but we do recognize that we need to provide them, hey, here, here are some supports and some things, something that can also be outward facing for our kids at home. We're working diligently on what those first five days look like for teachers. And it is of note that we've had ongoing professional development throughout the summer on all of our technology platforms, on what teaching in the block looks like. I definitely want to thank our library media specialists. I want to thank Jocelyn, Megan and Lisa, three of our department supervisors that have just really helped to get that work off the ground. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, and I won't mention them all by names, but there are the many, many teachers that have been on my committee as well as others. They have given up a very significant number of their days this summer to hear the various iterations of our plan and to provide input and feedback and tweaks to it. And even our own Theresa McKeon of our union, who took a call from me on a solar-powered cell phone during the break to be able to give me some feedback on the plan. So that's my update and I'd be happy to, happy to yield my time to the next speaker.
Thanks, Paulie. Rick, we mentioned, Paul mentioned a little bit about scheduling. And as the board knows, we're going to be entering teaching negotiations as they requested, they'll open the contract over impact bargaining. That begins this week and that actually has an accelerated timeline from our normal teaching negotiation. Basically, everything's cut in half before you go to mediation and then cut in half before you go to arbitration. So, Rick, you want to talk about what HR has been working on as we reach out to staff and some of our numbers?
Sure. Thanks, Tom. I'll talk a little bit about staffing from both the hybrid perspective and from an online perspective. So as we know now, we have about 1,100, 1,200 students opting out for remote learning across elementary, middle school, and high school. And we're going to need about, approximately, we're still determining the final number here. We're going to need about 80 or 90 teachers to teach across all levels, including special education. And as I mentioned in our last meeting, our strategy to fill these online teaching spots will be to utilize our current teachers who've requested to teach online. At our last meeting, three weeks ago, I'd mentioned that we talked at that point with about 50 staff members who have expressed concerns about returning, either because of their own underlying health condition or that of a family member. That number has grown to over 100, which includes teachers, paraprofessionals, teaching assistants, and other personnel. And, you know, certainly we understand the concern our faculty and staff have with returning and are working hard to create the safest work environment possible. And we believe the hybrid plan does that. We're also working hard to accommodate as many of these online requests as possible too.
Uh, we're also working hard to accommodate as many of these online requests as possible too. Um, and with this large number of online spots we have, we will be able to meet a large number of requests from staff, but unfortunately not all of them. Uh, three weeks ago, I met, I I thought we had, uh, would have a tremendous amount of hiring to do to get ready for September eighth. Uh, and there certainly will be a lot of hiring to do. However, because of, uh, where the section breaks are falling with our students who are opting to go online, we will be able to reduce the number of sections in our school hybrid plan. So we'll use elementary as an example. Tom had mentioned earlier that we'll have, uh, twenty-six online classes. That might be twenty-six, it might be twenty-seven at the elementary level. However, we may be reducing, um, our overall elementary sections by twenty-three classrooms because of the opt-outs, resulting in the need to hire about three teachers at the elementary level. Um, and we're looking at, um, similar numbers at both the middle school and high school. So for all of the teachers that will be going online, we're seeing almost a, a one-to-one uh, reduction in the number of sections in our hybrid model. So we'll hire a number of teachers at the elementary level, middle school level and high school level. And it really will be trying to accommodate those folks that will require a leave of absence for the year. Um, and we'll be doing that on an interim basis. In addition, as Tom mentioned, we are hiring, um, additional substitutes and teaching assistants in the event that we do have, um, increased staff absences, which we're we're planning for as we, uh, head into the school year. And another thing that, uh, Tom had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, um, we will have isolation rooms in each of our schools for students who are ill and waiting to be picked up by a parent or a guardian. And we're exploring the possibility, if it's economically feasible, of hiring school health aides for a limited time to assist our nurses in managing the care of the students in those isolation rooms. So we'll have more to follow on that. Uh, as Tom did mention, we will be, uh, meeting with our teachers' union later this week, uh, to begin what we might term as midterm negotiations over, uh, the change in working conditions. And Amanda and Liz will join us for those negotiations. And, you know, we've had, as as Paul mentioned, Tom mentioned, Andy mentioned, we've had very collaborative and productive conversations with the WHEA throughout this entire process. And we look forward to the, the pro, that process starting on Thursday and continuing, um, that collaboration. And we're, we're confident that we'll come to a, uh, an agreement and a plan that will be best for, for everyone. So I'd be happy to, well, I'll yield my time to, to the next person and.
Thanks. Thanks, Rick. Appreciate that. And, um, we mentioned earlier that we do have some kids back now, or as mentioned by a caller earlier, that we've got our first groups of kids back. And I, I think I, um, sent some of your write-up from Dr. Nelson along with some great pictures. So, um, Gretchen, do you want to talk about some of our hybrid planning for special education and the success so far of what we've done over the past couple of weeks?
Absolutely. I'm excited to. Um, so the hybrid plan for students with an IEP or a five oh four, um, it basically follows the plan that that Paul has, um, has outlined for everyone already. But our students with, with IEPs and five oh fours need some, um, extra planning to make sure that they are able to fully access their plans. And so under the hybrid plan, we will be keeping our ELC, our Early Learning Centers, um, on the same schedule. So they will be operating, the Early Learning Center naturally has lower numbers in their classes. And, uh, they also operate on a half-day schedule. So there's an AM session and a PM session for most of our students. Some of our students attend a full day. So the ELC will remain on a, a regular schedule. And we feel confident with the size of our rooms and the, uh, the space that that we have, um, that we will be able to provide all of the safety, um, and mitigation measures for ELC. But in terms of students that are in kindergarten through, uh, grade twelve, um, our students with plans, that's IEPs and five oh fours, will follow the hybrid model, um, just like their peers, and they will receive all of their IEP services in person on their in-person week. And they will receive their IEP services virtually during the second week. And so those services will happen throughout the day. They won't be reserved to the afternoon to make sure that students that are accessing the, um, the general small group instruction, um, have, have an opportunity to do that. And we're not, uh, we're not in conflict with those schedules. So, um, so those teachers will be and related service people will be supporting students that way. The one exception to that is a group, um, of high-need students. And those are our students, uh, who have had, um, the most difficulty accessing in an online platform. Um, but also those students who typically have, uh, a lot more support, uh, services at school. The state did a pretty good job of identifying high-need students for us and we're using that definition that was, as was outlined in the plan in order to, um, to find those students. And so right now we have about forty-three students in our intensive behavioral program and ninety students in our intensive academic program that we are recommending for full participation. So the high-need students that will be participating in full will still follow, um, the, the shorter day schedule, the abbreviated day schedule. However, they will be in both weeks. So they will be assigned to a red group or a blue group. And when it is their red group time, they will receive all of their services, um, specialized instruction and related services in person. But they will also receive, um, generalized, um, access to the curriculum during that, during their on-group. Um, and then on the opposite week, when they would typically be home, uh, with their peers, they will still come into school and they will receive all of their specialized instruction and related services in their learning centers. And so as we did hear from the caller earlier, there are a group of students who really rely on that in-person programming in order to make progress. And these are the students that we will be supporting through this process. Um, in terms of Strive, um, our students at Strive and, um, our students at post-secondary over in the Cogswell Building, the Strive students will be participating with the hybrid plan. Um, their, uh, their staff feel very confident that they will be able to work with uh, students in order to access on both their in-person week as well as their, um, their virtual week. And then right now, the plan, um, outlines a hybrid plan for our post-secondary students as well. If numbers change significantly with those students that are opting out and we can increase some vocational sites in a safe way, we may be able to provide for full participation for our post-secondary, uh, students. We're working on that. You know, so that is something that might, uh, that might change a little bit, uh, between now and the start of school. Um, in terms of, um, the things that have been happening this summer that I'm really excited to talk about is we started bringing students in on July, uh, sixth for in-person assessments. And so those are one-on-one assessments with teachers and related service providers, um, for students with IEPs um, who missed some testing or were in the process of being referred and needed testing. And so that has been happening at Bristow. Uh, we have, uh, Bristow's been a wonderful host to us. And that, that program has gone very, very well. And as of last week, we had provided over a hundred testing sessions. And so that's going to help all of those students and their teams make, uh, really thoughtful plans for them to return to school. And then, uh, about a little over a week ago, we started our acclimation program. And so we identified those high-need students, um, that we were able to program for the summer with our, our staffing, um, opportunities that we did have, um, at the elementary, at the pre-K, the elementary, the middle and the high school levels. And so last week, we started three classrooms at Whiting Lane. And I'm very excited to report that it has gone very smoothly. Um, both students and parents were very happy to arrive on the first day. But I don't think that they were more excited than their teachers, which was very, very fun to see. And you're right, Tom, we have some, um, incredible pictures and videos of students engaging with their teachers. Um, they're engaging with each other. They are, uh, making progress in their, um, academics. But they're also making significant progress in their ability to follow the safety measure. We've seen a significant increase in mask tolerance and, um, all of the hygiene protocols that are happening and it's very exciting. We've also been able to create some wonderful training videos for our staff and for parents, uh, so that when we all come back to school, we've got really good examples of how teachers are using their PPE gear, how students are engaging, uh, great procedures for coming in to a building, for going outside to recess. So all the questions that people still have, we've been able to, uh, to provide some evidence of how well that is working. And so a thanks to Andy for all the PPE gear that have been provided. The teachers are feeling quite comfortable, uh, with all of those, um, pieces of equipment. It's really added, uh, to the success of the program. So this week we started another classroom at King Philip and one at Webster Hill. And then tomorrow we will start one at, um, Hall High School. So, um, that, that is very exciting to report.
Thanks, Gretchen. Um, very good news how successful that program has been. And, um, working with kids and families that need our help. And really, this is one of the essential pieces that I, I, it's, it's so... Of course, we all have opinions and this should be the way it is and this should be. And when people are talking about their children, it's the thing they're most passionate about. I get that. We have ninety-three hundred students and we have fifteen hundred staff members. That's almost eleven thousand people that are trying to balance all the things that we're doing to get everybody back as safely as possible. And while I feel that pressure distinctly, um, Rosina Haskins, I've given the task not just of um, equity advancement, but also community relations through programs like this. And there's nobody that can, you know, I, I guess I blanch sometimes when people say, are you even thinking about these kids? Because it's typically, you have no idea. That's exactly who we're thinking about. That's exactly who we're trying to get to. And, um, Rosina's worked to make sure all of our kids and families are being fed, um, that they have the technology that they need. And, um, now she's added and been doing a lot of work about childcare and, um, trying to meet families' needs with that. And Amanda on the board's been helping there. So, um, Rosina, you want to give a little bit of, uh, update on the, um, community work you've been doing?
Sure. Good evening. The, well, the biggest update that I'd like to share this evening is one that is very pressing for many of our working parents of school-aged children, given the hybrid model. And our, uh, community outreach advisory, we acknowledge the challenge, uh, parents and caregivers face with how to ensure that children are able to participate in full, safe, equitable learning while they are working. So this is a challenge that significantly impacts, um, some families more than others. And, um, we just cannot, it's not something that we can fully take on, but we are doing everything that we can to help families by reaching out to our network of community partners, uh, those who are childcare providers and those who are facility managers and physical space providers, so that we can include in our communication and outreach plan resources that may address childcare needs for, uh, parents and caregivers. So presently, we're taking an inventory of these resources that exist to share with parents and caregivers. And we, we feel strongly that, um, you know, no, no parent or caregiver should, um, have to ever choose between the care of their children, uh, that they love and the jobs that they need. So we, we operate with that equity lens in mind. Uh, Andy touched on a variety of outreach and communication efforts, uh, that we have been, um, employing, including the release of some health and safety community videos that we're working on. And so we've curated a collection of these videos that are, we call them community videos because they are, um, by the people in our communities. And so we're just working on trying to, um, get those translated into multiple languages, including, um, sign language, more than just, uh, closed captioning too. Uh, Paul mentioned, uh, the anti-racism work. And over the past week, we had teachers give up their time to, to work in person following a safety protocol that we established in virtually to help us with social emotional learning and anti-racist, uh, education curriculum. We, we lost some traction, uh, due to the storm last week, but we convened a virtual gathering today with about twenty-three, uh, community parent groups, um, just to engage in that work as well. Uh, you heard from Natalie De La Cruz, we have started reaching out to students so that we can hear their voices and have their input, uh, on what school will be like for them. And as Andy said, there's just still so much to do. But, you know, the childcare support was an important update that I wanted to make sure that I shared tonight while we have the, you know, in public.
All right. Thank you, Rosina. Um, so, um, that's where we are. That's why we're moving forward with this plan. And that's, um, some of the things that we have to get done, um, before September eighth. And, um, I hope we've given you a good overview, uh, both of the rationale and of the, um, work involved. Every country that's been successful at reopening schools has not just reopened schools. They have staggered their start to schools. Um, it's gone about in ways that are, um, that are, uh, different based on communities, but also have worked together. As I said in the letter and as a couple of people acknowledge, we, we don't know what the future holds in terms of our numbers. We don't know what the future holds in terms of, um, our systems. We don't know what the future holds in terms of things like vaccines. Things could change dramatically. I, I hope at the semester break, everybody that's on, online learning has reason to say, you know what? We're all coming back and I have the problem of rescheduling thirteen hundred, twelve hundred more kids in school. Right now, we're at about thirteen percent of our kids having opted out. So, um, that number, as I've said, I expect to continue to grow this week. Um, and so those numbers will shift with classrooms. But, um, but I'm excited for our principals to kind of reclaim communication. And, and I say this in terms of, not because I don't enjoy communicating, but I think that it's important for our kids to start talking about who their teacher is. I think it's important for our parents to start talking about the excitement of returning to school with trepidation, but this idea of, okay, we're going back, talking about who's in our class. And kind of, um, with caution, moving to a place away from just an overwhelming fear and overwhelming panic and overwhelming frenzy. And I know parents are trying to find childcare. I do not minimize, um, what this puts on families. But I also think this is, um, the safest way for us to get back. I'm looking forward so dramatically to the first day of school. And, um, I won't be going into the buildings, not because I'm afraid to go into the buildings. This is one of the things I need people to understand. We, we've got to make sure that we, I'll be outside and we'll all be outside at different places. But we've got to make sure that we keep our buildings, as I said before, visitors, um, which is not going to look the same as it has in the past. Um, but it's going to be school. It's going to be West Hartford Public Schools. It's going to be our teachers. It's going to be our kids. So I, I think we're getting to the point now, now that we're doing real work, um, instead of just plans and actual setup and work, there is an excitement. There's an optimism. There's a feeling that I'm looking forward to, um, really taking part in with our families. So, um, it's going to be a hard year, no doubt about it, but that doesn't mean it's not going to be a good year. And, um, so with that, my team's ready to answer your questions.
Great. So I'll just remind board members, if you have a question to ask, put a question mark in the chat box and I will try to spread out who gets to ask questions when. Um, also because of the format of the meeting, before you ask your question, if you could just state your name. So, uh, those who are listening in, uh, know who's speaking. So if there are any questions, let us know. Uh, we'll start with Liz and then Ari.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, first of all, I want to thank you, Tom, and everybody else that's been involved in the summer. It's been a ton of work and it hasn't been easy. Um, and we all appreciate everything you've done. I think the question on a lot of people's minds is, um, right now our numbers... I think the question on a lot of people's minds is, right now, our numbers are so low. And, you know, we've received tons of accolades as being the lowest in the country. I'm just wondering, what is, at the beginning of October, when you revisit the plan, what are you going to be looking for to shift us to a full in-school model? What metrics have to change? You know, we just said that it's two point one per a hundred thousand now. What are you going to be looking for to be different to move us to all-in-person mode?
Yeah, it's a fair question. I think if we're at two point one, we'd feel comfortable at that point re-acclimating because we'd have had a month to roll out this learning with guaranteed of six feet spacing classroom, of understanding how our lunches work, of looking at how we're utilizing our space. I mean, no matter what, and this is why we want to roll back the elementaries first, the large districts just have more pressures that they have to deal with. When you're dealing with a fifteen hundred person high school, when you're dealing with a nine hundred person middle school, when you're talking about that kind of spacing, that realistically, if that one metric stayed the same, that's great. And by those four weeks, we'll have known that our ventilation systems are working. We'll have known that our spacing protocols are working. We'll have known that we haven't had an outbreak. We'll have known that our recesses are working. We'll have known how grab and go works efficiently for all kids. So at that point, we'll have four weeks of knowledge that our knowledge is based on reality instead of guessing and hoping right now about this is what will work. And that's really, you know, one of the things that I try to get across is that just because we think something should be a certain way, doesn't mean it will be. Like every time I read the protocols that are released from different organizations about opening schools, I got to tell you, I get frustrated because they all open with testing. And I'm like, why are you telling me this is the safest way to open schools? I mean, it's, I know that, I know that, but we can't do that and it's not possible. So that's the kind of thing that, all the protocols that we come across, if it were just based on purely on numbers, that would be the case. And the governor keeps talking about, he believes all schools, all students should be back in school. He had that power. And then the guidance from the state shifted to, we need to take into account all of those other things. As the ninth largest district in the state of Connecticut, I can't pretend that we don't have size issues. We do. And so those are the things that I think as we re-enter and as we re-enter in a measured way, as basically every other district around us is doing, we're going to find out things about what really works in getting kids back in this situation. Because nobody has ever done it before. Nobody alive has brought kids back to school, all kids back in the United States during a pandemic. So I think that it's four weeks and I wish it was zero weeks. But I think four weeks is a safe price to pay to make sure that we learn and understand and are moving forward as safely as possible.
Thank you. Liz, do you feel that addressed your question?
I do. Thank you, Tom.
No problem.
All right, Ari, you're up.
Okay, I have two questions and a comment, just to preempt. But I, again, just want to echo Liz's sentiment about, you know, all of the work and the level of appreciation. Words really can't express how much I appreciate all that you and your team have done. I'm still convinced that none of you have slept since March twentieth and you all still look great. So I don't know how you're pulling that off. But, so I have two questions. They're kind of interrelated. Tom, can you explain or whoever this question suits best, the difference between the remote learning in the hybrid versus the remote learning that kids are going to get that choose fully remote? What the difference, what that looks like?
No, you want me to grab that? That's a good point. Yeah, Paulie, go ahead.
So, hi Ari, thanks for that question. And I apologize because we need to do a better job even just calling them different things. So if I am a, if I'm a family for whom the, coming back to school is not an option because, you know, either a family member in my home or the student is in a high-risk population, then the state has provided for them to have the ability to temporarily choose learning from home, remote learning, and the district has to have a plan. We have a robust plan to be able to do that. So that's kind of like an everyday thing. And so what that looks like in West Hartford is that all of those families that have said so, regardless of what school they're in, will be blended into grade level sections and have an assigned teacher. And that will be totally separate from kids that are going to school. For the kids that are going to school, because hybrid learning, the hybrid plan is a back-to-school plan. All students that have said, we want to come back to school and that are coming back to school in the hybrid, they'll come back for a week and then they'll get distance learning for a week. That distance learning that they're receiving is going to be coordinated by their same classroom teacher that they see when they come into the building. So therein lies the largest difference, is that our remote learning plan is going to be a dedicated teacher just for those kids. But it's totally separate from the kids that are going back into school, whether we're hybrid or whether we're full in-person attendance.
I think, and Ari, what I'd like to add is, on page twelve through fourteen of our reopening plan, we go through model schedules of the online instruction or what we call the at-home learning group that have opted out. And so I think what really is the difference is those students are in synchronous learning with asynchronous breaks through the day. They're following a schedule depending on their grade level, depending on how it fits. But they're with their teachers throughout the day. Whereas the people that are in hybrid, it's an interesting way to look at it. You can look at almost as hybrid as an online learning model, but the kids are in session half the time. And Paul describes that way and I think sometimes it helps. That that learning during the day, they're not in the same session. We've carved out the afternoon so that they're in live sessions with their teachers and live instructional periods during that time. So, you know, in the plan is definitely first place for people to look with that.
And then my follow-up question to that is, I, just having worked with a lot of families who are experiencing a lot of anxiety, I mean, as we all are, a question that has come up is, what is the possibility? So let's say, I know you had mentioned that it's more difficult to go from being remote and then coming back to hybrid because of spacing and all of the preparation for that. What if a child or a family goes, begins hybrid and then due to increased anxiety about social distancing or whatever it might be, what is the ability for them to then kind of move towards the remote if it's affecting their emotional well-being?
So they start in school and they want to go remote. That's an easier process for us. It's something that we'd honor. It would take a little bit of time for placement. We want people to be understanding. To be honest, there's a lot of districts that are trying to put up a lot of roadblocks with this and that's not where we are. We need people to kind of stick with it if they can. But I anticipate, Ari, in truth, that you'll have more people moving from in-school to online than you would the opposite. The only way it runs into problems is when we get into section breaks. At which point, if our numbers are so large, all of a sudden in third grade, we don't have places to put them. Now we have to hire a new teacher and re-break those classes. And is that reasonable? Because the online classes, we're establishing them now. They don't have to have the same kind, we don't have to think about the kids six feet apart. So we're staying with the class-size guidelines that we've always used for West Hartford Public Schools. We're not, I've had other people say, oh, those classes are going to be forty people in a class. No, they're not. We're sticking with our guidelines. But there could be, if all of a sudden we had an exodus, that could lead to some difficulty and some delays just in terms of us hiring personnel to work with those kids.
Okay. And then I just wanted to, so I've been questioned a lot about kind of going back to school plan professionally. And I had actually talked to Deb about this because a reporter had approached me and I said, I think it's a conflict of interest. I'm going to bow out. But I did, and what I had told Deb is, the message, you know, up until this point, there's been a lot of uncertainty and confusion about what is the plan, what's it going to look like? And I think, given your explanation and your team's explanation, I think really how we embrace this hybrid plan as parents will really have both like immediate and long-term lasting effects on our children's ability to adjust to the return of school. So I guess for me, I just, I have this plea of parents that, you know, the sooner that we can all come together and kind of embrace this, you know, it will benefit our kids. Because we, as parents, are really, we serve as our kids' barometer. So if we're running around the house really anxious or angry or what are they doing? You know, bad-mouthing the schools or whatever, it really does an injustice to our kids because that's the message that they're receiving. So I guess I just want to, as a parent, as a part of the Board of Education, as a psychologist, like my plea would be, here's our plan. We need to move forward. We need to be positive about it for our kids and help them adjust to get ready to be students and return to school. That's it.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to Lorna and then Jason.
Hello, Lorna Thomas-Farkason. My question is, timeliness-wise is interesting in light of what Ari just shared. But first off, I just want to say thank you as well for all that you've done in putting this plan together. It certainly was not an easy task and I say that not only as a board member, but as a parent, having to decide which route to go. Definitely not an easy one. And I think at the end of the day, I think all of our colleagues would agree that if we could do it the way that we want it to be, it would be having no COVID- nineteen and our kids going back to school as it was, close to as it was before. So certainly anything outside of that is not ideal, but we're certainly making do with what we can. My question, and this is where it falls in line with what Ari shared, is recognizing the importance of the climate of our students and of our children. What are, what efforts are being made in terms of the staffing to assess their barometer? I imagine that there are, prior to COVID- nineteen, there were staff meetings and kind of supervisory check-ins, those pieces. What opportunities are offered to the staff? And I say that because they certainly have had their choice of what to do, whether to come back or not. And that is, I respect their choices in doing so. But just want to see, I just wouldn't want any negativity to trickle down into the classroom or trickle down behind the screen where there may be some negativity that's displaced onto our children.
Yeah, Lauren, it's one of my biggest concerns and both you and Ari expressed it well. I think we need to be excited. I think parents need to be excited to see their kids back in school and most are. And I think teachers need to be excited about getting their kids back in school and most are. However, not all are. And that's something that I think it's important to recognize. In complete candor, I offered to have faculty meetings with different groups with me during the summer and the union didn't think I should do that because that's implying a pressure for a meeting during the summer when teachers aren't working. I understand that. They have a union prerogative that they have and they work forward. Some of our schools have had voluntary meetings during this time and have talked to some of their staff members about this. Paul's committees have certainly worked on this and I'm going to let Gretchen and Rosina talk about this also because it's part of our social emotional well-being as we talk about our return to school. And really Gretchen's committee's been working so hard on that. But I, you know, CEA represents teachers. They have a position. The AFT represents teachers. They have a position. We've seen protests. We've seen discussions. There are people, there are people that do not believe we should be reopening schools. I respect the opinion. I understand why they feel that way. I really don't want to be wrong. But I am not naive enough to say anything that I'm going forward with is fact in this world. We've seen how much the science has shifted during the six months. We've seen recommendations change over that time. We've seen the, we've seen the idea of children do not shed this virus at all to, oh, hold on, children may shed this virus. And we've seen two different reports come out within a week saying different things. So I get the difference of opinion. I also trust our staff's professionalism. And that's something I really think that I want to put forward is that our teachers are great and our teachers love kids. And when they're in front of the kids, I believe that they're going to be so excited. And I think one of the most important things is going to be those five days of professional development. Because one of the biggest things you can do is be in the building. One of the biggest things you can do is change your environment and see what it's like and feel yourself there and get re-acclimated. So I think that the work we do during that week on professional development will not just be the typical professional development. It'll also be taking temperatures, not necessarily literally, but talking with our staffs in our buildings. And that's really where part of this shift has to shift for me. And listen, people have a cute, Rick always says I'm a big fan of me. But the truth is, I'm a bureaucrat to many people. You know, there's sixty thousand people in this town. I understand they're all the superintendent. The school is the family, the classroom teachers, the principals. They're the ones that are together that need to come back together with their kids and develop, redevelop, as we do every year, those family meetings, those family situations that really don't as directly involve me or the members of my team, frankly. That's where we kind of give them guidance and then they sail forward. Gretchen, I don't want to step on you on some of the work that I know your group is doing too on this.
Well, I have to be honest with everybody here. The social emotional group, we worked really hard to make incredible recommendations and pull resources together. But I have passed the baton and Rosina and Ann and Carrie have really done an absolutely amazing job of taking all of our recommendations and putting them together and working with teachers in a platform where they can make them come alive. And so I don't want to steal any of Rosina's thunder either because she really has been the force behind making it, you know, happen in that way. And so, but I agree with you, Tom, in that our professional development is the time for us to, number one, take the temperature, but also to build our staff up and to make sure that they have the tools and the skills they need to move forward with students. And I know that what we will bring to them in that week will increase their confidence. And hopefully that translates into a very positive message for children.
Rosina, could you also talk about some of the videos and some of the work, things that principals are going to be sending out that I think will help in this area?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, we have aligned our work with our theme for the year, our one community, one-year theme. And just looking to really engage the community, the way to really understand our health and safety protocols and our positive school climate work and efforts is to really like situate yourself in it. So we have invited families to submit videos and just different types of products that reflect their understanding and their commitment to being a part of making sure that we keep each other safe, we look out for each other and that we start the school on a safe and positive, and safe and positive and healthy ways and that we end it that way too. And so we will be opening our portal of health and safety videos and they're fun. They're, you know, families, faces that you'll recognize. And we did not want to have every school create their own videos. We said, this is a community. And so we're going to create a community of resources. But again, we have to make sure that they are inclusive in their delivery, multilingual. And we have to make sure that they show that we are being responsive and respectful. So that's really, that's really it. It's been fun. Uh, and I think that, uh, as more come in, I'm just, I'm like so excited about the ones that are coming, that are coming in from some of our youngest, youngest children. Um, it is a banner that's sitting in front of me now that, um, I know it needs to hang at Bugbee. Um, and I said to the parent, if I have to come meet you, or it might, it might not make it to Bugbee because I might want to use it for other purposes throughout the district. So there's a lot of that happening and we're just so grateful for the families that are, um, you know, contributing to this, to this community cause.
Thank you.
I can just add one more thing, Tom, if you don't mind, because Lorna brought up a good point about the staff.
Yeah.
And some of the things that Gretchen and, uh, Rosina talked about. We are going to be engaging the services of our employee assistance program, the Lexington Group, who we've had a partnership with now for over 20 years. And providing additional programming for our staff around their well, social and emotional wellbeing. With additional programs focused on mindfulness. Um, so we're having a conversation with them actually on Friday to begin looking at a menu of programs that we're going to be able to provide to our staff as we start the school year and then throughout the fall as well as the need arises.
Thank you. Jason?
All right. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to, uh, echo the sentiment of, you know, of gratitude, uh, for everyone's, uh, everyone's work and, and bringing this, this plan into fruition. Um, and I wanted to make a couple of comments about, um, about interpreting our opening, our, our, um, our reopening, uh, in, in a positive light. Uh, because I think, you know, it's not just that, um, that our kids want to get back in school. My, my fifth grader is so excited and she, uh, um, she catches me, uh, not washing hands. She catches me with my mask not fully, you know, touching on the sides. Um, and our kids are really, uh, I think they're, they're really excited about doing this. Uh, but I also don't want her to think that it's all on her, you know, that it's all on her behavior. It really has to do also with us as a community, um, how much we continue to, uh, to do the things that have kept our numbers low. Uh, respecting the, um, travel advisories and quarantining, um, when necessary. And those are the things that are going to keep our schools going. Um, and, uh, so I, on, so I think it's important for us to be positive and to, and, and to put this, uh, put this forward because the students want to be in school and they shouldn't be in that, uh, in, in that boat alone. Uh, we need to lead and we need to show them, um, that, that this, that, that, that we can't go back in person, the way things were. And that what makes me positive about this is that this is, what will make it successful is cultural change. Uh, and that cultural change is about how we care for each other and that we keep each other in mind and that we're, we're wearing masks for each other, not just for ourselves. Uh, and so I think that's the thing that I'm excited about is this generation is going to be learning about, uh, how to care for each other. And, um, and so I have a, a question about, uh, an equity question. Uh, and, uh, medical question. Uh, so I, I guess I'll start, I'll lead with the medical question. Um, I think it would be helpful, uh, Tom, if you could explain, uh, the composition of the medical review board and that relate, the relationship of the review board with the district. And then a kind of related question to that is, um, is how, what's the district's interpretation of state guidance around, uh, optional masks for three and four-year-olds? Uh, and how does that get interpreted, uh, in, in, uh, within the district and within the, uh, the various schools? So maybe I'll, 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 uh, let you respond before I have a, another question.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And I'll, I'll start with the first part, then I'll turn it over to Andy because he's chaired our health and safety committee. The, the mask piece, the state has said that in pre-K and we do, and I, I should have, and Paul may get a question later about, there is a difference between our early learning center, which Gretchen talked about, and our pre-K that's within our buildings. The state changed their guidance, um, to pre-K will not wear masks. Which, um, does change things within a building. And we asked the commissioner about that because it does seem kind of a four-year-old can't, but a five-year-old can, because kindergarten, they have to wear masks and pre-K they won't. But it's one of those places, and this is something that, um, that's difficult for me. I can't engage in all of those debates. Like that came from a medical committee that looked at it and made that recommendation. And so that's what I'm moving forward with. And, uh, you know, I'll ask clarifying questions move forward, but that's where we are right now, um, with our pre-K. And Andy, do you want to talk about our own health and safety committee? And, and again, I don't want people to, um, you know, none of these committees, I didn't pick the committee members. And so we didn't, we didn't say you all have to agree to everything that we're going to go forward with. And they're not, they're advisory bodies, which I think is important because frankly, two different people on any one of our committees disagree about, um, about what should be the next steps. But go ahead, Andy.
No, and that's, and I think that's a really good point. And I think we see that, um, anytime you bring, uh, a large group of people together, there's going to be a lot of different opinions. And so, uh, Jason, to your question then on the, the makeup of the committee, if, actually if you look in our plan, it lists the, the various members for that. And really the makeup is, was a combination of, of medical experts. Uh, our medical advisor, uh, medical experts who are referred to us as having, uh, as having a background, uh, not only in pediatrics, but also in, in infectious disease. Uh, it also includes, uh, emergency management personnel, not only for the town, uh, but for the district and Eric Dancy and, and other parents who are experts in, in emergency management procedures. And then it also includes, uh, teachers, uh, who, uh, not only are, are teachers in our school, but also some teachers who are parents, uh, to try and capture that voice as well. And so I, I do think if you look at that combined, also I should mention also some of the, the, the officials that are on there, aside from myself, aside from, uh, from Eric, from Bob Palmer, uh, aside from the union, uh, teacher, union president Teresa, who we work very closely with on that. There's also, uh, representatives from, uh, the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. There's our nursing supervisor who's a, a great asset and works very closely with their nursing supervisors as well. And so it's really been a, a good group that is, uh, very opinionated, full of great ideas. But also then really a, a positive force to be able to say, you know, I think that this is a good, a good solution going forward. Have you thought about X, Y, and Z? And so that's really where we, where we've tried to balance it in that, you know, I don't have, you know, as Tom and we, we've all said many times, you know, the reason for these advisories is because we don't have that inherent background. But if we can ask those questions and then get some of that information back, it does help us in moving forward with decisions. And so that's really been, been the goal of that. And it will continue, uh, to meet, as I said, that it just, we went ahead and approved the health protocols. These go through, uh, a number of reviews with that group and also then with public health and with our own medical advisor for the district that's also approved it.
And, you know, one of the things, my life would be easier if it were just, okay, what's the number? It's 2.1. West Hartford Bloomfield Health District says, okay, you can open. Um, that's not what's given. And I also don't want to put things on other people because the decision was put in the hands of the superintendents. I get it and I understand that. I will just say this, the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District, I have been in constant communication with Amy Kraus, who's in charge, and she is very comfortable with our hybrid plan going forward and that there is not a, there is not a, Tom, you can't do this, or Tom, you should do this. She is very comfortable and supportive of our hybrid plan.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, um, I asked not as a, as a critical, uh, uh, kind of question, uh, you know, uh, with skepticism, uh, but just responding to, uh, concerns voiced to the, uh, voiced to the board via email, uh, with concerns about, uh, uh, different, um, uh, medical issues. And I think it's useful to, to, to air that, that the composition of that review board and its role with the district. Um, and going forward, that those are the kinds of, uh, voices that will be, you know, that will be informing, uh, uh, decisions. And so, uh, I did have another, uh, question about equity and, uh, one, uh, just to, uh, stay on the topic of email. Uh, I've, I've been noticing that many of the emails, uh, that we, we receive as a board are mostly from families, uh, in the northern part of the town and, and, uh, uh, from the northern part of the district. And I really want to encourage everyone who's listening and everyone who's paying attention to this, that we really do want to hear from, uh, and I really want to encourage, uh, live in the southern part of the district to also voice their opinion, email us. Uh, and, and that we really want that to be, uh, to hear other, other voices and, and concerns. And the, the, the question, the additional question on equity is about language and outreach. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious if you could talk a little bit more about the, um, the, the, the things that the district has done to, to try to reach other, uh, other communities that speak other languages, uh, Spanish, uh, Vietnamese. Uh, if these are, uh, uh, if this is, um, about making those kinds of language interpret, uh, uh, translations of the plan and other documents and information available. There's also been way, um, efforts to try to see if those, if that information has.
Yeah, you cut off there, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna start in because I think I get the gist of your question or communication and translation, because one of my biggest difficulties is that my communications home to parents have a set character limit. And so if you'll notice, they're all the exact same length because I always have to cut. Andy and I will cut to get it down. And what happens is parents elect when they register in Power School, um, what language they want to get those messages delivered in. So, um, when we have a snow day and Andy sends a message in calls, they get it in that home language that they've chosen. And so that's really important to us that that message goes out to them in that, in that language. Um, Rosina, do you want to talk about, a little bit about what happens then when people need to go to the website and do translations?
Right. So our website has a Google Translate feature. It isn't perfect, but, uh, families tell us that it conveys the salient features of our messages. We have also tried to cross-reference messages that are going out, um, with some of our volunteer language, uh, translators. We have Shalise, um, Shalise, who is also on our, she's a port, ESOL coordinator. And so she is also on my, uh, community outreach advisory. And so she brings to us great resources and contacts with families. You know, we have reached out to families who have, uh, great connections with relationships with other people that they'll say, I really can't commit to the time or, you know, I have some other priorities. My family's large. This is what time we eat dinner. Uh, but here's someone that we know and trust that we would like, uh, to kind of represent our voices. And so we have a doctor who's on our committee because, uh, she's a pediatrician of, uh, families that just named her, know her. I didn't know her before. And so, you know, that kind of information comes to us. Those voices come to our table through other people. But, uh, we, we, we really try to be particular about using all of the technology and all of the, um, software that we can that will help us to translate to other languages. And we're really trying to be thoughtful, more thoughtful about some of Superintendent Moore's, some of his video messages, making sure that it's not just closed caption, but making sure that, you know, there's, uh, ASL signing happening, um, while he's speaking, kind of screencast. So a lot of tools, a lot of strategies, we can always do better. And we're always looking for feedback from families. I know that one of the things that we want our principals to send out, and some have already done it, is the visual of where that button is. Where do you find that translate feature? Because if it isn't your native language, you don't know to look for that word. Uh, so we need something more visual that points people right there.
Yeah.
All right. Um, next is Mark.
All right. Thank you, uh, everybody for all the hard work. I know what you guys have been going through. And it's a, it's a difficult time and I just want to appreciate the time that you've put in. But I do, I do think I have maybe some tough questions, uh, maybe not. But, you know, being the lowest in Connecticut, here we are, 2.1. You know, Tom, what is the number in October? You know, we're 2.7, 3.4. You know, if you're developing matrix on right now at 2.1, we're not returning school for five. And what is the number for us to return in October? I've got more, but I'll, we can break it up.
Yeah, Mark, thanks. Um, you know, the state issued guidance that anything below 10 is considered a decent number. But then there's not just the state guidance, then there's the local county guidance. And that combines with, um, with the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District and their, um, their idea of what the number is. So it's, like I said, if it was just the number, absolutely, that would be, um, where we are and, um, but if we see ourselves going to 5.4, if we see ourselves going to numbers, that, that rolling number is going to be published every Friday and sent to me. Um, not just for, um, the county, but for the state and, um, local decisions will be made. We do see some outbreaks in towns that even break it down further than by county. We've had a couple of those cases in Connecticut. Um, where we've seen it in Bridgeport and otherwise. So we'll evaluate it by there. I don't, you know, I mean, one of the things to say that I think is fair here is, um, I hate giving set dates because then people think, well, set date, this means this is going to happen, not if something changes. Set numbers, it matters what the HVAC specialists say to us. If they say to us, you can't, this can't handle that load, um, then at that point we'd have to make a different determination. So, um, the truth is, um, you know, the state has issued guidance. It's not mine. It's that between one and 10, um, that you can consider going back full-time. That's actually what it says. But then page two says all those other things that I said at the beginning. So certainly if we're around the number we are now in October, I expect us to be going back. We're at four or five, I expect us to be going back. Um, if we're at the same number and HVAC doesn't consider it feasible, then, then what? Then we'd be in hybrid likely. I mean, that, we'd have to go through all those different situations. What's our mitigation strategy? What could we do? What's the safest thing for our kids? Um, so we'll be making safety decisions at that point. I know people want there to be if X, if, you know, if X, then Y, but it's too unknown what the X is. So if we were ju, again, if we were just making a decision based purely on our health prevalence numbers, there would be no decision. This would just be, this is what we're doing. Um, so again, that's the expectation. That's how we'll move forward. Everything's public. The information is public. Um, we had to make a decision about how we'd open schools. We had to make a decision about how we'd get kids back safe. And I, and I'm not taking this, I, I know the intent, how you bring it up, Mark, so don't, you know, forgive my, uh, voice. It just, um, we, we feel like this is the best way to get us to that point where we can bring everybody back.
And then, um, a couple of other questions too, is the, you know, we, we talked about the health and safety committee. You know, we put these committees together and I, I honestly think in my committee, it was more of a one-way conversation and we weren't vetted for any of this. And I applaud you for putting And I applaud you for putting this committee together. But from the, even a business perspective, when you put business together, you consolidate those, those opinions and you make decisions off of them. And, you know, we saw the emails from them as well. I, this is more from the public, mostly, is that we weren't, we weren't really vetted. You know, that, that information wasn't vetted through the committee, and it really wasn't vetted through the committee.
I, if I could push back, Mark, the decision about whether we go back wasn't ever intended to be vetted by any committee. It was the question of did the, did the committee vet, vet all of our decisions? No, we got feedback from our committees about what our processes would be. Now, they are not approval bodies, and here's why. Because since then, I've gotten, I know you got a letter from a member of the committee that says we didn't vet it. Then, then behind the scenes, I also got letters from three other members of the committee saying, how dare that person say it wasn't vetted? We went through it, that person I don't agree with at all. So we've had members of that committee, to put, to put the perspective out there, we've had members of that committee that are against masks. That their advice would be no masks, that kids can't wear masks. So we have a wide range of doctors on that committee that communicate. Now, any meeting with 34 people, it's an hour long, isn't, okay, all 34, let's go around the room and figure out how this is. So there's work that goes forward with this. And, you know, we listen, different feedback, trust me. They email me all the time, they email Andy all the time. There is a back and forth feedback with those health professionals on the committee.
Understood, and I appreciate that. And I know it does get complicated with a lot of the committees. But, you know, this board is a vetting committee. And this, we weren't involved in it, in the vetting committee. We didn't have, we're not voting tonight. And I, and again, I say this for the public, we're not voting tonight, we're not making a decision for that. This is just an informational briefing. And I say that because you mentioned that they weren't a vetting committee, but we are. And we don't have any decision in this. So I just, that, I say that for the public so that they know.
All right, well, Mark, then it's fair for me to say this to the public. You've known me, I've been superintendent in this district now for seven years. The decision about how to reopen schools went to the superintendents. I've earned this community's trust. Now, the board, I also know, and you know me, that I've been around for seven years working with the board. And there is not a superintendent in this state, because I'm a history teacher, that respects the rights of the voters to have their feelings go forward. So if the mood of this committee, of this Board of Education, was completely that we need to go virtual and we need to be all online, then it would be my job, because your effect reflect the views of the community, and you have an expertise, to either convince you otherwise, or take that advice, go forward, or say to you, and candidly, and I don't say this, and please don't take it in any way as a threat or otherwise, I might not be the superintendent for West Hartford. And that's a decision you would have to make. Because one of the things you are a vetting committee for, one of the things you do decide is who the superintendent is. And, you know, I say that to the community also. People talk about tenure, everything else. I serve at the pleasure of the Board of Education, takes four votes at any given time, and I'm not the superintendent anymore. So, I mean, the idea that there's no vetting that goes on between seven people that can remove me from my job, I don't think that's really fair. Because the idea is, is that I present this plan to you. My job, as Ari so eloquently put, is to convince everybody in town that we need to go forward moving positively. And I can't always do that. I try, and believe me, when I can't, every email I get and every person that badmouths me or anything else, that's a failure on my part because I couldn't convince them. And I take it that way completely. And by the way, I say that knowing I'm never going to convince everybody of everything. There are things that are uniquely the board's. When we had a debate about warriors and chieftains and mascots and imagery, people kept asking me, what do you think? And I said over and over, that's the Board of Education's decision. I have, I have my own opinions, but it's not, I'm not the decision-making body for this. The governor and the commissioner, for whatever reason, were clear and direct to me and every other superintendent in the state on a call that this is a decision that the superintendents of each district must make. So I, I say that with, and I say that with respect and everything else. It just, that is what it is, and that's what went forward. And so I'm doing the best I can.
I'm not disagreeing, Tom, and we didn't talk about removing you. I don't know where that came from. It's just a decision-making process. And I understand the Haven Board of Ed actually voted on whether they were going to go back to school or not.
Well, the New Haven Board, the New Haven Board of Ed voted on whether to go back to school or not. The superintendent said, I can't support that. Now, the New Haven Board of Ed has to appear before the Commissioner of Education, and the superintendent has said, I can't be the one presenting to the Board of Education. So they are in a mess because technically, the state doesn't allow it. The state right now has said, you're either going back to school or you're in hybrid plans. So New Haven Board of Education voted that way. The superintendent recommended something different. Now, the superintendent has to go appeal to the State Commissioner. The superintendent has said, I cannot represent being in virtual, and you as members of the Board of Education have to do it. So it's really, it's really not a good situation there.
So the email from Jessica Ritter about the personal liability to the Board of Ed, she talks about no appreciable risk, link to legal claims and such. However, you know, that's us, right? And that's who it claims on. And we, we may be, we may be limited for the risk, but that doesn't limit us to the money defending that risk.
No, you're.
We still have to pay to defend.
No, the defense is from the district. As a Board of Education member, the defense is from the district.
The taxpayer money that we have to defend.
Yes.
I'm talking about the taxpayer that we represent.
Yeah.
Yes. So we may not be liable personally, but we are liable financially for that.
Yeah, I'm not following what, I'm not following how that relates to the reopening plan.
Well, it doesn't, it just, not necessarily the reopening plan, but just the liability on claims and money that it's going to cost to defend if something, because we don't have a whole harmless. So if people do, you know, get sick with COVID, God forbid anything happen, there's no whole harmless degree, but we have to defend ourselves. And that's going to get very expensive.
Oh, I would, I would expect lawsuits throughout the state. Yeah, and the district will have to defend itself. And just as I'm named in, I mean, I was interrupted in a meeting two months ago to be served with a suit. This happens to us oftentimes, and sometimes for reasons that are not necessarily the best of reasons. But yes, school districts are sued continuously, and we spend a lot of money defending ourselves. Because to the option of not spending a lot of money defending yourself is spending a smaller amount to settle a lawsuit. And when you get into the habit of just settling lawsuits, then you get more lawsuits.
So we talked about mental health issues as well. And, you know, that's something that's kind of close to my heart because, you know, not being in school with these low numbers that we have, well, from the country, how does it affect that community? And we saw even something this summer. You know, we talk about COVID death, but what about mental health death too that affected different communities here in West Hartford?
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt, Mark. Out of respect for you, I'm having a difficult time hearing you. I don't know if it's just on my end. I just want to make sure I can thoroughly hear your, your questions and statements.
Okay, I'll try to get a little closer and closer. So the mental health issue is, you know, close to my heart because, you know, if we lose someone from COVID, it's a terrible thing, one person. They get sick, it's even a horrible thing, and they recover still. But the mental health, we saw it affect our community here in West Hartford this summer specifically, the whole community in KP. And, you know, I just want to, I, I mention that because it's something that affected us as a community. And I know that we're doing everything we can, but happenstance helps with all that stuff. And, you know, I'm afraid that the number is going to go to 3.5 in October, and then we're going to not go back to school. But we could still be low compared to our other communities around us. But we still won't go back to school. And that's why I think the community kind of needs to be involved in this. Where we step up is the.
Why do you think, why do you think we won't go back to school and everybody else will, Mark?
Well, because I don't know what the number is. We don't have matrix involved and.
Yeah, Mark, I've said it's published by the state, it's right there, it's 10 or less.
We're not going back to school for time.
Yeah, but Mark, I've said there's more than one number. There's two pages, it's not just one number. If there was one number, this decision would be a lot easier. And I know there's a lot of people that think we should go back to school no matter what, and we should be there. There's people in Georgia that think we should go back to school no matter what, we should be there. In fairness, Connecticut's numbers are not the lowest in the country. They're in the yellow, but there are many states in the green, okay? A little bit north of us, there's states that are in the green. So in fairness, no, I anticipate us going back to school. That's the goal, is us going back to school. And I don't, I don't think it's fair to set me up as a straw man that's not going to allow us back to school. I've said all along, that's my goal. But, you know, I've had to make decisions that have led to people being really ticked off. So when I canceled, when I canceled Pops and Jazz and the Conner Play, I heard from everybody what an idiot I was. I wasn't, I was right. I was right. So that's the thing that I've had to go through continuously, is have people question my motivation, what I'm trying to do, what is best for this community. So the truth is, I sleep soundly at night because I know every day, what I'm doing in my chosen field is serving the kids and the families of West Hartford. So as far as their mental health goes, I, I would put it out there right now that I don't think there's a person that has spent more time investing in and planning for the kids of West Hartford mental health. And the way for us to get back safely and to build on people's mental health is to make sure people believe that the schools are safe to open. And then work from there, once we open successfully. We're opening unsuccessfully, we'll be disastrous, and we'll never have people feel the schools are safe.
Fair enough.
Which, which will happen in some places. Some places in Connecticut are going to open, whether they're in hybrid or regular, and somebody's going to test positive on the first day, or the second day or the third day. And that is going to be deeply problematic. Because the fact is, you know it as well as I do, that people are going to test positive for COVID while we're in school. And that, that's just true. And we're going to manage it, we're going to work through it because the situation has changed in the world. And we have to be in this world where we do move forward with our kids at school.
Okay, thank you.
Amanda?
Hi, Amanda Aronson. I have some comments to make, and the goal of my comments is actually to encompass and cover some of the questions that we've gotten. The public is not going to hear us asking the exact questions that have been sent to us or which we fielded. But I hope that as you're listening to this meeting, either through the comments of the leadership team or through our questions or our comments, you're starting to accumulate some of the information that you're looking for. And at this point, one of the things I think is really important for us to think about is, we have this theme this year for one community, one year. And at the end of the day, a lot of the questions that we are getting are rooted in wondering what kind of hands are we in? Are we in good hands? Who is making decisions? How is this coming about? And it's important for us to take a step back and remember a few things because it's easy with the amount of information that we have had to absorb as human beings over the last several months is immense. So this district was one of the first districts, it was the first district in our region to close schools when there wasn't even a positive case in our schools. That was very controversial, lots of information coming at Tom and the team about that, a lot of mail. And that decision was made based on a number of things, but not the least of which was the relationships that he had with people in other states who are seeing things before we were. So the information that we're always working with is coming from a number of different places. And that, because of that decision, there was a lot of trust that was built about not being afraid to make hard calls and not being afraid to go first when we need to decide things, even if it's going to result in immense anger and misunderstanding from our community. And our community at the town level, at the board level, at the superintendent's office level, everyone involved in our community, people who are buying gift certificates to restaurants to help keep the businesses afloat, all of those decisions have, had positioned us to have many different options available to us. So that every time we hit a new point of planning, we had as many, West Hartford had many options on the table. And as we moved into the springtime, we did not know what was going to be asked of us from the governor and the commissioner. So we needed to, but our team, our team continued planning and started working on a number of different plans so that we were ready. When we did finally get some clarity on what we needed to do at the very beginning of July, we were, as a district, ahead of the game in a number of ways to be able to respond to a three-week directive to put three plans in place, which the team did with a number of different advisories. You know, these, this plan, as it ultimately stands, is not Tom Moore's plan. And it is very important that we as a community remember that because Tom is not just the superintendent of this district, he is also our neighbor. And if you think about what the superintendents of schools, that what they are being tasked with and the tremendous weight that is being put on their shoulders to be tasked with decision-making is a very, very unfair personal feeling to have and to deal with. Tom does not have any hair, but if he did, he would have pulled it out by now anyway. So when we start thinking about where we were in this, in the very beginning of July, we had a four-hour meeting to talk about the plan that we were supposed to be charging force with. And then a number of days later, you know, and we were ready. This district made sure that we were ready. We had three plans in place, all the PPE had been secured because Andy and his team started early on that. All of the things that needed to be done over the months that we had available to us were used very efficiently so that we were ready to submit those plans. When the decision was then made to approve plans, ours were quickly approved because they were solid, because our team prepared us for those plans. When the decision swung back to us, it was swung back to the superintendents, which we all know that that, that that is not Tom Moore's plan, that that plan came to fruition, all of our plans came to fruition with groups of people informing things. And then even for the public to hear that even though this Board of Education is not charged with voting tonight, that if we were presented with a plan that said, send all the kids back with no masks, with numbers through the roof, we would be yelling and screaming, and we would have an impact on that plan. So when we are responding to this, we ask a tremendous amount of questions behind the scenes that, that are not coming out in the meetings due to time. But we are asking a number of questions all the time, and we will continue to. But as we've now approached this time period, conditions changed. The likelihood that we could, when Tom would say, you know, if we can go back in person, he says that because we have the confidence that we have the coverage, we have all of the things in line to be able to do that. And when he says, it's probably not going to work right now, it's because there's good reason for that. And as we got information from all sorts of different reasons, where we could no longer necessarily pursue that, but yet we couldn't pursue all virtual learning as well when we're thinking about the number of days that we need to account for to be legally in line with the number of days that we have to serve if we are with the hybrid. Now, we were the first, one of the first to announce that. And that is because our superintendent wants to make sure that we have as much time as possible to do all of this work, which is not a lot of time. So when we, and I'm personally involved with a number of different things in this community and throughout the state, in the, in contact with people in different organizations. And I can assure you, and we know this as a board, but I can assure you that our superintendent, our entire leadership team is the go-to. is the go-to team for recommendations for what to do. Now, there is no right answer. So that is the big question that everyone across the whole country is dealing with. There isn't a right answer, but we are growing increasingly more comfortable being uncomfortable because this is how it's going to be to some respect. I think if we're honest with ourselves, it's going to be a roller coaster. But our team has consistently shown that they're preparing us to adjust to whatever comes our way. And that is the stamina that they have in the professionalism. When we think about all the different things that they have to be dealing with, every time there's a change of circumstance, they are they, they need to be tangled up with the legal piece, the health piece, the HR piece, the state mandates, the financing, the staffing, every single decision that is outside our control that comes our way, they have to quickly evaluate, redirect, and they are constantly showing us that they know how, when Plan A, B, and C don't work, that's Plan, now we're on Plan D. So how do we continue to do that? And to me, I would not budge from this community, having seen the backend side of how our teams are working. Because we are showing that we continue to be ahead of the game. We announced, one of the first to announce, um which was a shock to the, it felt like a shock to the community even though we had it as one of our plans, but we really, we didn't think we were headed in that direction, but here we are. This is where we are, this is what we have to work with. And when we think about that, our community has now had time, in one week's time. If our, if we had had this meeting last week, if the power hadn't gone out, we would have probably had a very different meeting. In one week's time, we've been able to see the other districts announcing similar things. We're able to see, for instance, like a New Haven, making some of those, you know, when I heard, when I read in the paper that the board had voted on that, I thought, well, they're not actually allowed to do that. So how's that gonna work? Now they're gonna spend all that time dealing with that situation when our team's dealing with how to schedule kids, how to do teachers, how to do the work to get us into the building. So they gave us, they've given us a head start on every single piece of work that we've needed to do. Because they, this is the varsity team that we have working for us. And that is something that we have to continue to remember. The other thing that is happening simultaneously is because we were able to announce some of these things earlier, as soon as we knew them. Knowing that that would create an immense amount of stress for childcare, an immense amount of questions about other areas. Our community has now been able to start thinking about how they can step in. There are a lot of conversations that you're not hearing tonight that will be coming your way in the next week or so that are going to help provide more information about how the community is stepping up. There's providers who are looking at how to expand their offerings for childcare. There are employers who are looking at themselves saying, okay, I own a company, how can I take care of my employees' children? And I will tell you that this is part of that one community, one year. We need our community to help fill in the blanks that some of these things, this is pandemic education. This is not the day-to-day education that we have had. We are in need of adjusting our expectations, which we're doing together. But our community is helping us to fill in the blanks. People are now talking, you know, museums are talking about what they can help offer for the off weeks and thinking about how it can't just be for the kids who have transportation. There's people talking, there's someone, people giving concerts on boats and, and, and other places who are thinking, how can we bring music to communities for kids who can't get what they need um if they can't make it to school. There are all kinds of conversations going on at the community level to help fill in the gaps that the school system is not going to be able to do. The childcare crisis is something that is facing everyone in our country. The West Hartford Public School System isn't going to be able to solve that in this situation, but our community is really looking now because they know how they can each piece things together. So that we know that as we approach different weeks of this year, it is going to be like this where we're constantly adjusting, redirecting course, evaluating, making the best decisions we can with what we have to work with. And as a board member, that gives me tremendous confidence. From a record-keeping perspective as a secretary of the Board of Education, I am noting the comments from taxpayers and people who are asking a lot of questions about, you know, why did we spend this on PPE? Why did we do? Though, when you look at the dates of things that were expected of us and what was required of us to get plans approved, every step of the way, we have been in compliance and frankly, over compliance in most every area. And for people thinking about the natural tendency, the grass is gonna feel greener sometimes looking at other districts. We can tell you, you are going to see changes from other districts as they readjust. They will sometimes readjust back to the way we're doing things. If we can't adjust to the way others are doing it, it's probably because that are, we're designed differently as a district. So there is no right answer to a lot of these things. But we are in very good hands. We have an honest superintendent who tells us the truth no matter, and as early as possible, no matter what it means for his inbox. We have a varsity senior team, all of whom people want. They want all of them. And they choose us over and over and over again. And they won't tell you, but throughout this whole process, they've been dealing with the same things we have all been dealing with personally. From family emergencies and all kinds of things. But their professionalism is top-notch. Rick, thinking about this, the HR pieces. Part of this conversation also involves, you know, we've asked a lot of questions about um how things are working with the teachers and we have a very professional HR department, so all of the things that are happening are as they should be. But there's also that level of dignity where you've got people who have, who have committed years of their life to education, who are wrestling with decisions because they just wanna figure out how things are gonna work for kids. And ensuring that that sense of value, we have a, a society that has not respected teachers in education for the last three decades. And that, that is something that we all own. So those are pieces of that conversation when we're trying to figure out all these next steps. There's a lot to it. And making sure that we're not just thinking about our teaching staff for this year, but thinking about our teaching staff as we move forward. Cause we are not a warm-body district. We can't, we're not just pulling people off the streets to be in front of our kids with a sense of calm, who can handle the situation. This is pandemic education. It is going to feel different. And we have to remember as parents, cause I'm also trying to think about the other answers that we've had from emails. Couple of other quick things.
Amanda?
Yeah?
Sorry to interrupt. I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up because there are still additional questions that need to be asked. I'm keeping an eye on the clock.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, okay, so just keep in mind that our superintendent is also on the college board and is keeping track of how the things that are happening at that level. They are very well aware of how our education is being adjusted right now. So that parents who are worried about how things relate to the next step, those things are also shifting too. So that is going to work itself out. Um, I do have a particular question about if we have children who are needing to stay home because they're sick or quarantined for some reason, what option does that child have going back to? Like what happens to that child's education? Does that child go with the, in the afternoon group and hear what's going on there or the virtual learning teachers? You know, if someone's home for two weeks, how does that work with that child's education?
Yeah, I can let, um, if Paul wants to add to it, it's one of the benefits of our plan with the afternoon instruction is that any student that's home can take part in that as if they were on and off week. So they are seeing those teachers at that time. They're not going in with different teachers and different subjects. They're with their teacher keeping up and it allows them not just to get makeup work, which they would in regular time, but it allows them to do um work with their teacher. Um, that's their teacher. I don't know, Paul, is there anything you wanna add to that?
No, that's, that's the, that's the essence of it. The only thing I would really add is, um, you know, in the hybrid plan, we're really trying to have our teachers have the mindset of, uh, and Tom, you mentioned this earlier. Uh, you know, think of it as online learning with the benefit of having kids uh coming, having half of your group coming to school. So the artifacts uh that you would be using for instruction uh being posted to the learning platform, whether that's Classroom or, or Seesaw or what have you. Um, so, so that's, that's another element to it in terms of the students being able to access instructional materials and then have the one-on-one time, as Tom mentioned, on a daily basis with their teacher.
Amanda, was that your last question?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you for the, um, yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. I have a couple of questions and I know there are some board members who'd like a second turn, but I'll make mine a speed round if we can. Um, one is, um, are we going to be continuing the grab-and-go lunches and breakfast for students who are either in the full remote model or home for that week?
Yep, I'll grab and go, continue on free introduced lunch. Um, yes.
Excellent. Uh, my second question is whether the before and after-school programs that operate at the schools will also follow the red-blue team schedule or how that works out for parents and families who are using those programs?
I can, yeah, I can answer that, Deb. Yes. Um, actually, they are gonna follow the same hybrid. We've talked with, uh, WE, I've met with Morley. We've met with, uh, with the WE groups and such, and so they're, they're making plans that they will follow the hybrid. And uh, to Amanda's point as well, we're also working with them and to expand their opportunities uh in various space and, and really try to meet some of the needs of the community.
Great. So if I'm in school that week, then I can go to WE after school?
Correct.
If I'm not in school that week, obviously, I'm not gonna go up to school for just a week.
You may not we that week, yes.
It's terrifying. All right. Um, and then the third one, and I saw Liz Hewitt is on the call with us, is do we have an estimate of how much this is going to cost us? Um, and I know we're waiting to find out whether there'll, there'll be federal reimbursement or whether the state will come through with money, but it would be good to have an idea of the cost of the hybrid model.
Um, the hybrid model is um a little bit cheaper than going back all full. Basically, we're saving warehouse space, we're moving everything in right now whereas we still may have to move things back later. It may save us a little bit on busing early on, but in terms of the hybrid being like a bargain or financial considerations, that really wasn't a part of the consideration for this. So um, I think, you know, we said last time, and this is to be broad, you know, if I say three to five million dollars um, over what we had projected. Um, I am more optimistic we're on the low end now than I was two weeks ago. As we break down the classes and as we move teachers, but that, that has definite ramifications. We talk about how teachers feel about, so a teacher that's been at a building for a while may now be told with just three weeks left, which is why time is so important. Hey, you know what? You've been in Duffy Five, now you're going to Morley Three. I mean, that's just, now we hope it's just a one-year move, but that's part of the efficiency. It's the same thing at the high school. As we redo all the schedules, we're trying to do it in an efficient model with staffing. Middle school's the most difficult because of teams, so we're trying to, what can we move off-team a little bit to keep it in place? But Liz, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add to that?
No, I think that summarizes it. At this point, it really is, as Tom said, a, a real range until we're able to determine exactly how many teachers we need, exactly what the costs will be, et cetera. I had specifically asked about the CARES funding and uh our application is due on August 20th and we are expecting approximately seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, which we'll be able to put towards those costs.
Great. And then we'll figure out the rest, I guess, because there could be additional funds coming from either the federal government or the state government.
Exactly.
Then I just have one final question and then we'll um see if any other board members have questions um as well. And we've gotten a lot of questions about the engagement of students and families, particularly uh those of color. And Rosina, you touched on this a little bit, and I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit more or if it's best to have somebody else touch on this about how input is being um gained particularly from students who um, who may have thoughts and innovative ideas on scheduling and other concerns uh for school in this model.
So honestly, we're just really beginning that outreach work as Natalie De La Cruz talked about. It has been a challenge. I will say that since uh March, there've been a number of students that we've reached out to. And we commonly hear back from students, kind of to Jason's point, on the north end of town. In fact, when I look at the representation of people who participated in our parent work group today, it was heavy on the north end of town. And so we're just really trying to think about that a little bit more. Natalie and I had a really um rich conversation about some of the obstacles and things that are getting in the way and some of the predictability about who's gonna show up and um, and what we could do differently. And just, we have to reframe our thinking. We can't problematize people and I think that people feel that way. Um, that they're a problem and um it's, it's, it's our systems and the barriers that we present uh that we just have to work through so that we can access people. Um, so it's work to do. And so this, I feel, I feel optimistic about the student groups and uh using our student leaders to help us uh with some outreach. We came up with some good ideas.
Great, thank you. Um, that does it for me. Um, I know Ari, you had um one more que- ask.
Yep, I just, um, I didn't wanna interrupt um the discussion between Mark um and Tom, but it just kind of, I just wanted to comment, like I wanted to bring something up. Um, in terms of the mental health piece, um, you know, I think since March, everybody has been living in the what-ifs, right? Which creates all of this anticipatory anxiety, what's gonna happen, how is this gonna go, where's this gonna be? Kind of living, you know, being super reactive and, and functioning out of fear. Um, and what I'm hoping is having this plan to return to school should alleviate some of that. And the, what I actually like about the hybrid plan, um, like in the world of anxiety, to do gradual exposure to people as opposed to flooding them with like putting them back into school full force with all of these fears and anxieties um and everything going on around them. What this actually allows kids to do is come into school for a short period of time and then kind of withdraw and go back and be in the comfort of their home and their family and that sense of security and content ness, and then kind of continue to alternate that. Um, I, I actually think it will be beneficial to the mental health um of our students and our teachers. Um, and as a result, the rest of the community. So I just, I wanted to comment on that because um, I, I think it actually will be, it will benefit um with regards to mental health of our town.
Thank you. Are there others who have questions this evening? Okay, well, thank you um to the whole team for your presentations. I know there's a lot more to come and um I think I speak for all of us. I think when I say we really appreciate your communication, um, and keeping the whole district in the loop on things um has been very helpful. So thank you for that. Are there other staff reports and board discussions? Yes, no? No, okay, good.
Amanda, Amanda does for the bridge, you said, Amanda. Amanda just typed in chat. You have an update for the bridge?
Oh, yes, that'll come under Board Reports, Board Members Reports. Uh, we don't have any routine matters. Moving to information and reports, um, board members, communications and reports, reports from other boards and organizations. Amanda, you're up.
All right, thank you. Um, the bridge gave us a very, just for people who don't know, the Bridge Family Center is the um contracted youth service bureau for the town of West Hartford. They also run our teen center and our family resource center, which operates out of Charter Oak School. Um, they also offer mental health. So that is why we're reporting on them this evening. So there's, they gave us an extensive report. They highlight, I, don't worry, I did the highlights. Um, most importantly, in, in terms of our conversation about childcare, Peace Place is the name of the program for three and four-year-old children who attend Charter Oak School. They have spots available for childcare and in, as part of that They have spots available for childcare and in, as part of that program. So if you are a parent whose children attends, who has a three and four-year-old child who attends Charter Oak School, um, please be in touch with the Bridge and Deborah Zipkin, who is also on our Community Outreach Committee, and she can answer questions for you about that. And if I've mis-informed the ages, um, I apologize, but Deborah will clear that all out. The Bridge Family Center also has an emergency fund, which people in the, which they had funded from another source, but people in the community are contributing to, which is going out for direct need. So if you have, um, if you are a struggling family and you need some sort of financial support, um, the Bridge can answer questions for you about how that fund can be utilized. So you can call the main office and they will tell you more about that. Um, it is for high need situations. They are continuing school-based counseling and working with a lot of the kids that they were working with before. Um, they also are hosting groups, um, that have, that are related to the anxiety about transitioning back to school. There hasn't been a huge, neat, huge number of people, um, availing themselves of those spots. So while they are offering them and there are people in them, as we get closer to the school year, um, I would encourage people who have, um, interest in that to reach out and learn more about what those groups are because it is a group format, which is very helpful. They are continuing to do groups through the teen center in virtual format. So that's great for our high school kids and the groups are interesting. And they are continuing to offer telehealth, mental health counseling and in-person for people who would like to do that. So for our parents, um, our teachers, our kids in town, um, that mental health counseling is available, both telehealth and in-person. The Family Resource Center, um, operating out of Charter Oak, but for the whole community, um, has been helping families in a number of ways, especially young children through virtual playgroups, parent support, um, read alouds that are still going on online, um, guidance on childcare options. Um, they're helping us to connect with a number of different groups in the community who can help us understand who the providers are. Um, Great by Eight has also been a huge partner there. And they are also creating some tote bags with art supplies and school supplies and, and a number of different things that will help children as they are going back, um, who are birthed through five. So lots of things that are going on there from a resource perspective, particularly for young children. Um, so that's just something to be aware of. And of course, in constant contact with our schools and in our counseling arena.
Thank you. Do other board members have reports from other boards and organizations? Okay, and there, there is no other information or discussion. Uh, future business, announcement of future meeting dates. Um, our next two meetings are Tuesday, September 8th, a date which should ring familiar to everyone, and Tuesday, September 22nd. Um, although our agenda indicates that these will be virtual meetings, these meetings will be in-person at a location to be determined. Uh, we are looking at potentially the Town Hall auditorium or maybe one of the school auditoriums that will allow for social distancing among board members as well as, um, other participants in the meeting. And we're working with Jen Evans from WHCTV. Thank you, Jen, uh, for getting that set up so that we can begin to meet in person uh, once everybody is back to school. Um, any requests for future agenda items? Um, comments from visitors. Are there, uh, members of the public who are on the line now who would like to make comments? It would be the same rules as in the beginning of the meeting, which is you get three minutes, um, and we can take up to 21 minutes of comments. I unfortunately don't have a list of, um, who's jumped on in the order. So if you do have a comment, just kind of say, I'd like to speak. Okay, um, we do not have an executive session, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move Lorna, Ari Steinberg.
Moved by Ari, seconded by Lorna. And, uh, without objection, the meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-two.